Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and if you are hearing that theme music, it can mean only one thing, and that is that the Glendale State Council is now in session. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 27, 2008, meeting of the Glendale City Council Meeting. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. Could we hear your report, please?
Agenda for the May 22nd, actually, we should do the flag slip first.
Actually, let me just depart from, even though it says, Councilmember Weaver, we have Vito Canela in the audience, we'll hear about later, who is the surviving of the duo that created the concept of National Flag Week and saw it through to signature by President Johnson. Let me ask Vito Canela if he would mind coming to the podium and leading us in the flag slip.
You're not going to ask me if I mind? Have you got a range check? I feel very honored to lead you into the flag salute. And whether you ask me, I'm going to take two minutes to ask God to give enough wisdom to the leader of our country in making the right decisions so that our flag will fly forever as a symbol of a free country. And now, ready, beginning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you.
Please remain standing for the invocation. And the invocation this evening will be presented by Richard C. Garner of the First United Methodist Church of Glendale.
Let us pray. We are grateful for the Holy in life, for the invitation to view ordinary options in the context of sacred purposes. Help us to recall that just as decisions made today will affect the days ahead, our choices can represent the resolution not only of immediate concerns, but can result in the fulfillment of the hopes of the Holy. Cause us to respond to issues before us this evening with compassion, remembering that human needs here in the city of Glendale stand behind every request. Open our minds and hearts to the possibilities for justice and peace that lie within each matter considered, and prompt us to prefer that which is both gracious and loving, reconciling and healing. May our conversations be always generous and our decisions a blessing for all. This we pray, assured that the Holy is present among all and within each. Amen.
Amen.
I shall read the report.
Yes, Mr. City Clerk, if you could read the report, please.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, the report for today's meeting is that the agenda for the May 27, 2008 regular meeting of this Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, May 22, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Again, for those just joining us, the reason we are running long is because of our afternoon's, morning and afternoon schedules. It's been a very full day, which we'll explain about a little bit later, but in the meantime, this being the fourth Tuesday of the month, we will have our various proclamations and commendations, but first, why don't we go to our agenda preview?
Yeah, 3A's Agenda Preview for the Meeting of June 3, 2008.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Next week, on June 3, we will begin the day at 8:30, once again, with a report from the Acting Director of Finance and discussion with the City Council on continued discussions on the 2008-2009 budget. At 2:30 in the afternoon, there will be a Housing Authority meeting where, once again, we will continue to take up the item of the budget, in this instance, the review of the housing programs for fiscal year 2008 and '09. In the redevelopment agency, there is one item on the agenda with a number of actions associated with it, that is, the Alex Regional Theater Board Quarterly Report, and also report on a number of bid proposals that they have received as a part of the long-term maintenance and capital projects, requesting the agency to take actions on those. The City Council that evening, at 6 o'clock, there's three action items. First, the Fire Chief is presenting a report regarding the adoption of the very high-fire-hazard severity zones. The Director of Planning will be presenting a report on the changes to the Glendale Municipal Code and the South Grand Boulevard Plan relating to miscellaneous revisions and zoning interpretations of the Glendale Municipal Code. And then, lastly, the City Manager and City Attorney will be presenting a report on Dreaming of Roses.
Thank you. Can we have the next item, please?
3B is a proclamation designating June 8 through 14, 2008, as Flag Week.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Councilmember Quintero to make this presentation, if we could have Vito Canela and also Paul Steinbacher, if you'd come forward to the podium, please.
The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Flag Week, June 10 to 16, 2007, was established by an act of Congress in 1966 as a 21-day period during which our flag should be especially honored and displayed, and whereas by our flag's display we reaffirm our allegiance to the principles for which it stands and honor those men and women who have served under it in protecting our nation from those who have attempted to destroy our freedoms. The flag continues to stand as a symbol of hope and opportunity to those of foreign birth who have become citizens of our country. Therefore, I, John Drayman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, reclaim the week of June 18 to the 14th as Flag Week and urge all residents to honor America by displaying our flag at this time. Accepting as Vito Canela, but before I hand it to him, I also want to say that Mr. Steinbacher's son Nicholas was killed in line of duty, serving our country, and I had the honor of attending his funeral. And it was a moving, how to describe it? It was just very difficult to get through, and I didn't really know the family, but just talking to his friends and the mentos that were there and his family members, it was truly a big loss to everyone, and not just his family, but to everyone in the Crescenta Valley. He was a very popular young man, and I'm sure he's still being missed by his family and all of his friends. So, thank you.
I'm the type of guy that I don't like to talk too much, but tonight I'm going to say a few words. But first, I would like to thank the Glendale Council for issuing this proclamation, declaring the week of June 14 Flag Week in the city of Glendale. Many people are unfamiliar with the origin of Flag Week. It was during the 1960s that many members of the community in Montrose and North Glendale were concerned about unrest and flag burning. We decided that something needed to be done to protect and honor our country most precious national emblem, the American flag. At that time, I joined with Bill Berry, an old friend, to create something on a national scale that had never existed before, namely, a week of recognition of the flag, which will come to be known to the United States as a National Flag Week. Bill Berry and I, beginning by working with the Crescenta Canyara Rotary Club and other civic group in our community to convince former United States Representative H. Almond Smith to introduce a legislation in Washington that would recognize the week of Sunday Flag Day as a National Flag Week. Eventually, it's a beautiful story behind that, someday I'm going to write a book about it. Eventually, this legislation passed both to the House of Representatives and the United Senate in a joint session. And in June 9, 1966, President Lyndon Johnson signed the first proclamation designated the week in which June 14 occurred as a National Flag Week. And calling on all citizens to display the flag of the United States, from that day forth, each president is authorized and requested to issue a proclamation. And I have here the original resolution that was signed in 1966. So what's the moral of the story, as we gather today to celebrate patriotism? The moral is that out of a small town like Montrose, the dream and goal on hard-working citizens can be realized for our city, our county, our state, and even our country. And in closing, please remember to display the flag from Sunday to Saturday during the week of June 14 every year. Thank you. And this year, I have so many of these proclamations that I start to give away to people that they deserve more than me. And this year, I want to dedicate this proclamation to the memory of a young boy from La Cro Santa up in North Glendale, that he gave his life in behalf of the flag and tried to protect our freedom. And I have here tonight the father of that young hero to have set the proclamation.
Mr. Steinbacher, can you come forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
I want to add to this, to the issue of the proclamation itself, something that I downloaded off the Internet from the local paper in a news article titled "Flag Week Plaque Draws Crowd," from the dedication of the plaque commemorating Mr. Canela and Mr. Bailey's activities, along with those of Representative Smith and the Crescenta Canyara Rotary Club, as well as rotary clubs outside of the area as well. Engraved on that plaque, in addition to other things, are these words: "The Montrose Shopping Park Association hereby commends Mr. Bailey and Mr. Canela for their vision, and in doing so, we pay tribute to the enterprising nature of the individual citizen whose aspirations so profoundly contributes to the fabric of the American spirit." At the time that this was installed and dedicated, actually, Councilmember Eusefian, you were the mayor at the time, and when you spoke there at that dedication on Veterans' Day, not so many years ago, you were quoted as saying that just a couple of guys were able to get something on the desk of the President of the United States is huge. It's a huge undertaking, and you are so right. The fact that the individual dream of someone in a small community somewhere in America can see that dream and that vision grow to the point that it is supported by his neighbors and friends, and ultimately can see the support of service organizations, and then ends up being ratified in a joint session of the United States Senate and the House of Representatives, and then is signed into being, signed into law by the President of the United States, is truly remarkable, and it should always remind us that to hang on to your dreams, keep plugging away at them, keep working at them, they very often pan out. And I thank you, Mr. Canela. It's a special privilege to be sitting here to present this to you, when a few years ago, I attended this council meeting to receive that proclamation from this council. So, thank you so much. We hear about our next proclamation, please.
Next proclamation is designating May 15, 2008, as American Heritage Library and Museum Day at 3C.
I'd like to call on Councilmember Eusefian to make this proclamation, and if I could ask, please, Mark Denger, President of the Sons of the Revolution in the state of California, and Douglas R. Boyd, Senior Vice President, to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start by saying that there would be no flag, there would be no Flag Week, we would not be here if it wasn't for the American Revolution and all those people who fought for us, who made our country great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting this proclamation together. The proclamation says, "Whereas this 15th day of May, 2008, will mark the 115th anniversary in which the Sons of Revolution in the state of California has operated and maintained the American Heritage Library and Museum here in Glendale as the repository for the collection and preservation of the rolls, records, manuscripts, books, and documents relating to the American Revolution, and, whereas the Sons of the Revolution in the state of California have since 1893, through their patriotic spirit, love of country, and devotion to the principles upon which our union and this great state was founded, participate the memory of those brave men, sorry, perpetuate the memory of those brave men of the Revolution who by their acts of counsel, in the military, naval, or marine services, or in the services of the Continental Congress, or to the original 13 colonies, helped to achieve American independence. And whereas the American Heritage Library and Museum located at..." Folks, take this address down, 600 South Central Avenue in Glendale, "received no financial support from the city, much less from any county, state, or federal agency of government sources, and for the past 34 years, as a patriotic and public service for the people of the state of California and the citizens of Glendale, has kept this library and museum open to the general public, free of charge, in keeping with the purpose of the society to perpetuate the memory of the brave men who fought in the Revolution War. And whereas it's being appropriate at this time to extend public recognition and commendation to the Sons of the Revolution in the state of California and the American Heritage Library and Museum for their outstanding record of contributions to the community. Therefore, John Drayman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaims May 15, 2008, as American Heritage Library and Museum Day for their various patriotic historical and educational activities to the community of Glendale. 600 South Central, folks."
Basically, I'll keep this really short. We have, at the Library Museum, treasures that go back to George Washington, to colonial days, through the founding of California. If you haven't been there, we invite you to come down. We're open Fridays and Saturdays to the public. It is a remarkable place. Some of our records, our oldest records go back to 1366 and continue forward. So, we get approximately 10,000 to 15,000 people a year through the doors. Fortunately, most of them aren't Glendorans, or Glendaleans, I guess how that's, yeah, sorry. So, we invite you to come down and visit the Library and Museum at the same point. I also would like to sit here and point out another fact, and that is, from the Sons of the Revolution side of the thing, two of your mayors were members of our organization, and so from that standpoint, we have a very fond part of being a part of Glendale, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd like to call upon Councilmember Weaver to present a commendation to Johnny Harrison.
Johnny, if you would come up, this is Mr. Lexus of Glendale. I'll read the commendation, and then I'll come down, because I have something else I want to read. "In recognition of your continued support of the Glendale High School coed dance team of captivity in the United States where their continued great performances, your commitment to this group over the years, in every way possible, goes well beyond that which could be expected of anyone." Most of you don't know Johnny, but I went to Glendale High, and I happen to know the principal quite well, and I wanted some additional information on Johnny, just to show you. Talk about people that give to the community. And this coed dance team has won 20 national titles in six years, in coed, jazz, all-male, military, and solos categories. They performed all over California, in Las Vegas, Nevada, and Orlando, Florida, to earn the national titles, and Johnny paid for it. This paragraph I have to read because it says something about the man. "Johnny has taught the students the value of community service. The dancers have, because of his influence, started a community cleanup program with their team, and have taken part in walks for charities. He has communicated to the students the need to act as leaders in the community, not only with their success on the dance floor, but in their behavior as contributors to Glendale on every level. He has addressed their need for academic excellence, prioritization of family, and personal integrity. He's gone above and beyond the generous sponsor by acting as a motivator in all areas of the students' lives." And that's from Kathy Kandukian.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Say anything?
Yes. Thank you very much for this. I'll tell you, it's quite a team, as well as there's several other organizations, which I'll all know that we participate in, but, you know, since I've been hearing this morning about the flag and all that's been going on, I'm going to derail of a mini-speech that I had, and I'd like to reemphasize something that I heard a little bit, and, you know, the sacrifice that I have made for this thing is nothing compared to this gentleman right here. As it is representing the Flag Day, I'll tell you, that is something. So, thank you very much for this, and we'll continue on. It's a great city, glad to be part of it.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you very much. Our last presentation is also Mr. Weaver, and if you would, please, Mr. Weaver, step down to present that. Actually, you're going to accept it, so why don't you just stay put?
Accept it because the...
Save the shoe leather. This would be for Philippine Independence Week.
Yeah, Filipinos are busy somewhere else today, and I'll present this at their festival they're going to have on Saturday, June 14. "Whereas this year marks the 110th year of independence of the Republic of the Philippines from the Spanish colonial rule and a recognition thereof, many Filipino countries, communities in California and throughout the world will celebrate this historic event with appropriate festivities. And whereas the outbreak of the Philippine Revolution in 1896 and the Declaration of Philippine Independence on June 12, 1898, extinguished the Philippines as having the first constitutional democracy in Asia. And whereas in light of the fact that Filipino-Americans constitute the largest ethnic group among Asian and Pacific Islander Americans in California, the anniversary celebration of Philippine independence reminds the people of our great state of the historical and cultural benefits that Californians have received and will continue to receive for the Filipino-American community. And whereas the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, BIBAG, a nonprofit group of business and professional men and women, and the Filipino-American Kiwanis of Glendale, a civic group, have joined forces this year to celebrate the 110th anniversary of Philippine independence in Glendale. Now therefore, John Drayman, Mayor of Glendale, thus hereby proclaim the week of June 9 to 13, 2008, as Philippine Independence Week, and invite the citizens of Glendale to attend the Philippine Independence Day celebration on Saturday, June 14, 2008, at the Glendale Central Library. And that time will be 5 o'clock, will be entertainment and food. Usually, the consul general of the Philippines comes there, too, so if you're not doing anything, stop at the Central Library and enjoy yourselves. Thank you very much on behalf of the Philippine community."
You're welcome. And, Mr. Weaver, I'd like to add to that, that for those of you who don't know, the George Washington of the Philippines, Mr. Aguinaldo, that his grandson and great-grandchildren grew up right here in, oh, well, the great-grandchildren grew up right here in Glendale, on Kentucky Place in Locker Center in Whispering Pine Cottage. I used to be their paper boy.
Ah, I was wondering how you knew.
All right. Mr. City Clerk, we go to the next item, please.
I'm for a City Council and Staff comments.
Mr. Eusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And actually, before you get into that, let me just mention, there are a number of speakers here tonight, I noticed, on oral communications, who were here to speak with regard to rent control. I see Mrs. Unikian in the back. You might be interested in this, and your group may be interested in what Mr. Eusefian's comments are going to be. It might affect whether or not you wish to speak, so you might take a moment.
Thank you.
You still may want to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I wanted to let you know, to the public know, actually, I made this announcement earlier during the housing session. The Glendale community housing is going to get together with Neighborhood Legal Council and put two seminars together. One of the seminars will deal with landlord and tenant issues. The other seminar will deal with the issue of the foreclosure, what the legalities are and what the rules are, what are the do's and the don'ts. Those two seminars are being worked on. The time and the date will be announced as soon as we're able to figure out where we're going to do this. The first one is due to the fact that there have been so many people who have asked for issue about rent control, and so on and so forth. Many people have issues dealing with their landlords, which have absolutely nothing to do with rent control, but nevertheless, they have issues, and they think that's the way it's going to be dealt with. So, we will deal with some of those issues, and also, we would like to also have landlords attend, so they could have some of their own issues discussed during that salon that we're going to hold. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Eusefian. Do I have any other council or staff comments? Mr. Najarian?
I'd just like to relate the opportunity I had to attend a, perhaps a once-in-a-lifetime viewing. I was invited to JPL this last Sunday, two days ago, for the landing of the Phoenix Mars lander. Many, many residents of Glendale are employed by JPL and contributed just thousands of man-hours towards making this a successful event. We all held our breaths as the capsule entered the Martian atmosphere at 13,000 miles per hour. They had to slow it down for a soft landing, and they did that, for all you science buffs, through four means. The first means was the friction of the Martian atmosphere, even though it's only 1% of the Earth's atmosphere, it was still sufficient to slow it down somewhat. Then they activated a parachute, blasting through the top of the capsule with a mortar shell, they said. The parachute slowed it down, then they fired the retro-rockets, and finally, a suspension legs permitted it to land softly. It was a perfect landing in every sense, not even any dust kicked up on the solar panels which deployed. And my congratulations to everyone from NASA, from JPL, Caltech, University of Arizona, and all the residents of Glendale who worked so hard to make that a reality. It will have a nine-month lifespan. They do not expect it to live any longer than that, and it's going to be boring into the Martian surface, into the permafrost, and they're looking for life, actually, evidence of bacterial life. And we'll see what happens. Stay tuned.
Just think how they could have slowed it if they had used the friction inside this council chambers on certain days. They really could have slowed it down.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
I just want to say thanks to you, reminding me it was on. I turned on the Science Channel, I watched two full hours of it. So, I bet you I saw more than you, because they were going over to Arizona, showing they had about 500 people there, so they kept switching back and forth. I don't know what you all saw being right there, but television wasn't half bad in order to watch it.
Very, very good.
Yeah, actually, not as exciting, but the five of us attended the ribbon-cutting for the BMW dealership, the official ribbon-cutting. And what's interesting about dealerships, of course, is not just the income that they provide for the city, the second-largest source of income, is that correct, after the Galleria? But in addition to that, the high-wage jobs that these dealerships provide, it's more than just that salesman that people meet, it's the mechanics, the people that do the financing, the DMV clerks, et cetera. So there are tremendous economic engines, and none of us here happen to drive BMWs, but anybody was still good to, if you're a car enthusiast, it was good. Some people want to. But anyway, if you're a car enthusiast, it was interesting, and more specifically, I kept looking at all the employees, and many of them, of course, live in Glendale and those nearby neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you so much. I have a few comments. One is, I want to offer my special thanks to a few people related to the Memorial Day services around the city and local area. One would be to Larry Zarin, former council member, former mayor Larry Zarin, who, as usual, brought us a wonderful and very moving Memorial Day presentation here at the memorial on the corner of Broadway and Isabel, which is right here in front of City Hall. And also extend that thank you to all of the organizations and committees that were involved in making that event the really wonderful community activity that it was. I'd also like to thank Charles Beatty and the Montrose Shopping Park Association and the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce for, once again, presenting the Memorial Day service there at the corner of Ocean View and Honolulu. That's the 40th anniversary of that service. And then also, I'd like to thank the administrative people over at Glendale Forest Lawn for, A, providing again a wonderful Memorial Day service there, and also inviting the Glendale Mayor to come read the Presidential Proclamation and Prayer for Peace. I want to thank them. The second thing I'd like to talk about, Mr., I don't know if it's Mr. Zern's ball court or the city attorneys, or perhaps even Mr. Hagani. We'll make it a jump ball for the three of you over there. This is regarding 2700 Sycamore in North Glendale. This was the famous chicken coop property, where it's been decided it wasn't a chicken coop, but they don't know the history of the property the way some of its locals do. It was indeed, long ago, a chicken coop. But the point is, after all was said and done, there is now yet a new tenant living in the, some of the outstructures there, and nothing really has happened since it was determined and presented here that all of those structures were going to come down. So is it possible that we can find out where this is and what the status is? And along those same lines, on Endinus, there in the woodlands, I think you're familiar with this, Mr. City Attorney, this was the permit for putting new windows in the second story, except that there was no permit to have a second story to begin with. It was in court, however, since that time, and I think since your letter, Mr. City Attorney, on the subject, I think some of our own staff, you might want to speak with Renee Soder, because the, as I understand it, his view is that there is virtually nothing there that either has been permitted or is to code, and that, in fact, the property should come down. And so I think that's a new wrinkle that we should look at. Lastly, I want to be very careful about what I'm going to say, and I... Oh, okay, they weren't coming for me. All right. I want to be very careful about how I approach this, and I want, I hope that the public hears me carefully on this. It's with regard to Mountain Oaks up in the, what are we calling it now, far north Glendale? Is that what we're calling it?
It's not far enough.
Not far enough?
Yeah.
I would like to ask, I've spoken with some of the representative of the property owner there, and I would like to ask if we can please, just let's shine the light of day on this issue up there. We have a property that I am told the property owner would like to sell. I don't know what the terms are, if there are terms. I know that a design was dropped off to our planning department, but no application and no actual plan, just a design dropped off. I'd like to ask if our city attorney, our city manager, our planning department, can take a look at this, contact those folks, and find out exactly where we are with all of this. What I'm trying to avoid, folks, with the dropping off of a design with no application and no plan, I want to make sure that we don't head off down the road of another very divisive round of public upheaval in our city, especially when there's also some indication that perhaps the county's interested, perhaps the conservancy is interested. I'd like to know if you can bring us back a report on this, so we know exactly where we are with it. We don't have any upheaval of people thinking the city is working with anybody, that any individual council members are negotiating with anybody, that there's no deal being made here, and we just go forward and take a look at it and go through that process. Would that be possible to do?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I'll work with the city attorney's office and other staff to pull together a status report, whatever that may be.
Oh, thank you so much. Are there any other staff or council comments? Oh, no, that was someone on the phone out there that said yes. Okay. All right. Let's move forward then, Mr. City Clerk.
Item 5 is consent items, and the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Okay. Good. I have a request to pull item 5D.
Consent calendar without exception.
All right, second. Excuse me, let's stop one moment, Mr. City.
I think Mr. Zern might be saying the same thing I am.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we had, we are pulling 5B from the calendar.
Okay.
We just didn't have a chance to get it off the agenda, but it is being pulled. No date future, no certain date for the future at this point, just being pulled off the agenda.
Okay. I do have one speaker's card from Dr. Espirito. What I would like to ask then is if, when that is, when we do look at him back on the agenda, if we could make sure that we do contact him. I know that we have his contact information. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, the same for item 5F, that's the GWP report on providing valve and fire hydrant locating and valve exercising assessment. We'd ask that it be taken off calendar as well.
Consent calendar with the exception of those.
Excuse me one moment. Mr. Usapien?
I would like to also pull 5B.
B like boy?
Boy.
Okay. 5B like boy. Well, Mr. Weaver, you might just get to finish that sentence this time.
I'll move what's left on the consent.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yep.
All right. Mr. City Clerk, if you would, please.
Council members Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Usapien?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. Let's hear the item at 5B like boy.
5B is Director of Public Works regarding School Crossing Guard Program. At B1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with All Management Services, Inc. for $1,148,534 for a five-year period with two one-year options.
Okay. On Mr. Usapien?
Question, why a five-year contract?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, typically, that's what we've been awarding on our contracts is our five-year agreements. Oftentimes, we'll add the two option years, which typically will come back to council to exercise those option years.
And is the school board helping us in this?
No. This is funded 100% from the city, but Mr. Starbird has a...
Yeah. Maybe a little piece of background on that. Under state law, cities are obligated to provide the service with utilization of their traffic safety funds. In the absence of a city doing it, the city's school district can do it and utilize the same funds. So it's an obligation we have under state law.
Okay. So, yet, there's another component of city helping the school district?
We administer the contract. They could be doing it themselves, essentially spending our money to do it, or we can do it. In effect, we take on the administrative responsibilities.
Move the item.
Second.
Council members Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Usapien?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman? Well, as listed on the agenda, the next item would be Oral Communications, but I will defer to you, Mr. Mayor. Make your announcement.
Sure. Microphone. Seem to be doing this a great deal today. Turn on my microphone. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we have moved Oral Communications to the end of the agendized items, with the exception of announcements, which, if individuals would like to come forward and voluntarily limit their time to three minutes, we can take those at this time. And we do have one card for announcements, and that would be Doris Tweet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starbird and staff. My name is Doris Tweet, and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Crescent Valley chapter of the Red Cross to invite you and the community to our second annual Wine Chocolate Cheese Tasty Art Exhibit Event. This event is benefiting the Red Cross Local Disaster Fund. It will be held on Thursday, June 12th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the plaza at the Forest Lawn Museum overlooking Glendale. Last year, it was a beautiful event, beautiful, the sun was out, it was a clear day, the weather was great. There will be selected wines from Red Carpet, chocolate will be provided by Mignon, and cheese by Whole Foods. There will also be appetizers and auction items, and an opportunity drawing for $1,000 and a $250 shopping spree at the Galleria. Only 250 tickets will be sold at a cost of $25 per ticket, and of course, I have tickets here if anyone's interested tonight. The cost for the event is $60 per person, or $100 for two. And we need to, in RSVP, by June 5th to www dot A R C Glendale dot org, or you can call the Red Cross at 818-243-3121. The local chapter of the Red Cross responds to many local emergencies, and it is important to support these events, the efforts of the emergencies, and we hope that you will support us. And we hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Usapien?
On that item, I would like the viewers to know, if you haven't had the opportunity to go there, go there, because from the balcony, the view of Glendale is so different than what we see every day. You literally see the two mountains, and you see all the valley. I mean, it is an amazing view. I don't think a lot of us see that view, no matter where you live. That's a place to go, even if you have to do it for once. It'll be great if you go on that day, and Doris will be waiting for you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Clerk, can we hear the item at 7A?
7A is an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease of a real property to Royal Street Communications LLC for an unnamed wireless telecommunications facility at Felononi Park, offered on 5/20/08 by Councilmember Usapien.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
All righty. Can we call?
Council members Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Usapien?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. Next item, please.
At 8, under Action Items, at 8A is Director of Public Works regarding Award of Contract for Operations of Glendale Beeline. At A1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with MV Transportation, Inc. for the operation and maintenance of city's fixed route transit service not to exceed $31,924,191 for a five-year period with two one-year extension options.
Okay, thank you. Who are we going to hear from on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll kick this off while our transit manager, Catherine Engel, approaches the podium. As the city clerk read into the record, we're here tonight to recommend the award of the operation and maintenance contract for the Beeline Transit System to MV Transportation. MV has been our operator since 2002. They recently went through a very competitive, comprehensive vetting process, competing against three other firms, and the panel that judged them, as we detailed in the reports, made the selection, or, excuse me, the recommendation of MV. Ms. Engel is going to go over right now, in a very short PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Mayor. We have eight slides, about seven minutes if we got it down. We also have, she's here to go through the selection process, which, again, we detailed in the report, but we'd be happy to go through that to whatever degree you'd like us to. We also have several folks here tonight that are willing to come up and speak, representatives from MV. We have our own in-house staff, Dave Cole, our mechanical maintenance administrators here. I believe we have representatives from both the Teamsters and the drivers themselves. But I'll leave that all up to you, gentlemen, as to how much information you want, or how many, what kind of questions you want to have answered. In the meantime, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Engel.
Ms. Engel, let it be said that tonight, in the sleepy little village of Glendale, that we can do a seven-minute presentation in six and a half minutes. We have a number of...
The more nervous I get, the faster I talk.
Well, let's see what we can do to make you very nervous.
Let's make her nervous.
We have a number of speaker cards, so let's get into this.
We'll do it fast and furious. What I'll do is call your attention to our screen. What I'd like to do is kind of make a few comments, because over the last few months, we've had some very kind of critical and derogatory comments made about MV and about the Beeline services in general. And I want to just kind of point out for the record that most of those remarks are unfounded. And I'd like to present to you kind of a performance report for MV during the last contract period, because in transit, we have what we call performance indicators, and these are real common across the industry and used by transit agencies to kind of evaluate kind of where we are. And so I picked out just a few of them that are really specific for MV, in our contract with MV. The first one is on-time preventative maintenance. Having on-time preventative maintenance is really a good reflection of a proactive maintenance program, and also shows that we have a shop that's operating really well. You'll notice on this slide, MV has been reporting during the length of their contract, 100% on-time performance for preventative maintenance inspections of the buses. This is a really high standard and one that we've held MV to through the whole contract period. When we were getting a lot of negative comments about the maintenance program in general, the city hired an outside contractor, a third-party inspector, to come in and look at MV's performance, both in the shop and with their repairs on the vehicles. And you'll notice on the right-hand side, our third-party inspector confirmed that they were still, that MV was still doing the 100% on-time performance for their preventative maintenance program. The next slide shows our reliability. We look at miles between road calls, and this is really kind of an indication of the reliability of the fleet, but also the quality of the maintenance program. As you can see, the Glendale standard for miles between road calls is about 7,500 miles. The national average right now is 7,100 miles between road calls. And you'll see that throughout the length of the contract, MV has been way outperforming what the normal breakdowns are for service. So what this really does is really show the passengers, we have buses that are out there, they're meeting the schedules, and they're showing up to actually pick up passengers. We're not missing any service as part of that program. The other part of maintenance is our safety inspections that we have from the California Highway Patrol. They have a very stringent safety program that they do in inspecting all of our bus fleet and in our shop itself. So for all the years during the contract, contrary to some of the comments that have been made during Oral Communications, MV has passed all of their CHP inspections for each of the years. Now, in the last couple of years, we've been doing our own third-party inspections, and so in doing that, we're fine-tuning everything that we're doing on those vehicles. We're checking the daily inspections, we're checking the performance, the preventative maintenance performance, and we've had very positive reports back from the Transit Resource Center, or TRC, as you've heard over the months. Sure, we have incidents where there's some maintenance failures, or there's some items that need attention, but... maintenance performance, and we've had very positive reports back from the Transit Resource Center, or TRC, as you've heard over the months. Sure, we have incidents where there's some maintenance failures, or there's some items that need attention, but for the age of our fleet and for the amount of miles we put on our fleet, there will always be something wrong on a bus. It's a mechanical system. But for the most part, TRC has reported that we've had very good, very productive inspections, and that we should be very satisfied with the quality of the maintenance program. In the area of operations, when we look at performance indicators, we look at safety as being really key, and in our case, we measure accidents per 100,000 miles. Now, we travel about 900,000 miles each year on the Beeline buses. And each agency kind of sets their own standard. Of course, we want no accidents. I mean, that would be the standard we could all have, but that's really not a reality. Most agencies choose between two and three accidents per 100,000 miles. In this case, I put in the Metro standard, since they're also in our service area. But you can see that our history as far as safety and accidents with MV has been very low throughout the whole contract. Again, in performance, we look at on-time performance when we're looking at operations. And we have set for Glendale a standard of 90% on-time performance. This means the bus is sticking to their schedule, arriving at the bus stops on time for every one of our 400 and something stops in our 13 different routes. So the Glendale standard at 90%, though it's very, very high, MV during the last couple of years has been at an 82% performance. And you may say, well, that's a little bit low. But I've got to tell you, we have had major construction projects on every one but two of our routes during the last three years. So for them to be doing 82% on-time performance is pretty much like leaping over tall buildings and racing speeding trains. You'll notice, and I, for Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian's benefit, we did put up the Metro standard. Metro does a lot of service in our area, but you'll see how hard it is to actually do on-time performance when you really look at the age of the fleet, the diversity of the population we're serving, the congestion, and the construction, that a 90% on-time performance is a really formidable goal for us, and something that we now hope that construction has settled down a little bit, that we'll be able to pick up some more of that on-time performance this next year. We also look at operations and talk about employee tenure. For MV, they have an outstanding history of retaining bus operators for long periods of time. In this case, over 45% of MV's current employees have more than five years seniority. This is really phenomenal when you look at a contract operation. It's phenomenal throughout transit, but especially important when you're looking at a contract operation. We have a lot of employees that are here today, and they'll speak to their involvement with MV and their satisfaction with the service. One thing to point out, I think, in our employee relations, or in MV's employee relations, in their proposal that they submitted to us, they had given us a letter from the Teamsters, from Eric Tate, their business representative, supporting the cities, or asking for the city's support in renewing their contract with MV. And in addition to that, in the proposal, there was a petition that was signed by two-thirds of the bus operators and some of the other employees that work for MV, suggesting their support for MV, and the city is looking at that contract. So there's a very strong cohesive group, a very good team of folks at MV that are making this work. So it's kind of a reflection on both our local management here in Glendale, but also at the MV company in general. Another thing, and this is our last slide, we take a look at quality, and one of our measures of quality is our complaints. Our complaint standard here in Glendale is 15 complaints for 100,000 boardings. And we board 2.2 million people a year, and of that, we're having a very low number of complaints each year. Most of the complaints in the last couple of years has been on that on-time performance, mostly because of the construction delays that affect the routes and affect that on-time delivery of service. So the low complaints usually means that we're delivering a good quality of service to the public, and they're happy with the service that we're providing. What I could do, Mr. Mayor, is highlight some of the items in the selection process, if that would be your pleasure. And if not, I can move on quicker to...
It's your six and a half minutes.
Oh, then I'll take it and run. I do want to point out a couple of things that have come up in oral communications about the RFP process. This was a request for proposal, not an invitation to bid. So the process is really a specific process to look at both quality and price, not just the lowest price in the proposal. It's important to note, because I think Mr. Councilmember Yusefian had brought up, oh, we might be doing the SRTP process and changing routes in this next year. The bid takes that into consideration. When we develop the request for proposals, we balance the pricing component of it on hours for operations, because the hours really are dictated by the number of people you have driving the buses, all the personnel-related costs to that. And then for maintenance costs, it's based on the age of the fleet and the miles of the fleet is driven. So we tell them in the proposal, it's 59,000 hour, or I forget the number of hours, but there's a certain number of hours, here's the age of our fleet, and here's the historical number of miles that we drive. So in this next year, we can adjust the routes, we can change configuration, change the alignments, and it won't affect the dollars or the way that we deliver the service through the contract. We received four proposals in our process. We had a selection panel made up of three outside professional members from the transit industry, from Amala Valley Transit Authority, Santa Clarita Transit, and L A DOT. All three of those agencies contract out their services. So we had people that were used to working with these outside agencies, and were used to looking at the quality and the service delivery for those companies. And then internally, we had Dave Cole, who was our maintenance, mechanical maintenance administrator, who was on the panel, and then I served on the panel as our in-house transit manager. So with that, the staff had gone through independently ranked, or the committee had ranked the proposals independently, and then we spent a day actually interviewing the proposers to make sure we had all our questions answered and understood their proposals as they presented them to us. And in your staff report, there's kind of an extensive review of the costs, what we evaluated them on, how they ranked in that evaluation. And of course, we're presenting MV, who ranked the highest in that process. I want to do, I do want to point out that in your staff report, it was very obvious, going through that process, that MV had a superior management team, both locally here in Glendale and also for their corporate support. The proposal demonstrated really strong employee relations, the letter from the Teamsters, the petition from the employees. They also had a very good safety and training program that they were able to demonstrate to us. And they were the only proposer that had a Glendale operations facility. All the others had facilities that they were representing outside of the city. So it was going to cost, save us time and money, and wear and tear on our vehicles to locate here in town. One of the neat things that really kind of drove our group kind of to that final decision was that MV came in with some real technology advancements, some innovations that they were proposing as part of their project, that none of the other proposers even touched upon. So we're now looking at getting web-based maintenance software, so we can be in tune with them, and it's our partnership, the city's partnership with them in looking at their maintenance program. We're looking at on-time performance tracking software, so we can work closer to that 90% mark. And we're looking at some more automated performance reporting, so we can get you better information, more timely information about how we're progressing on our performance indicators throughout the year, and give you some more timely reports. So at this time, leaving my last 30 seconds, I would like to introduce our local team, because they have made us very successful this last six years. And we are also, MV is also proposing that that same management team is going to be with us throughout the life of our next contract. So let me introduce, and I'll just have them stand, our general manager, Justice Evedra, our operations manager, Fred Hardage, our maintenance supervisor, Santos Tapia, and our training and safety coordinator, Nestor Villafort. They're our local team. And then MV also has their corporate team that helps back us up when we have special projects and special needs. And with that, we have, tonight, we have John Monson, who's our CEO for MV, and W.C. Phil, who's our vice president for business development, and Leland Peterson, who is our regional VP for operations, but is the Microsoft techie guy that's going to make all of our on-time performance and our technical data reporting really work, so we're counting on them to help us. They're also here tonight to answer any of your specific questions about their proposal or about their work with us. And I would like to introduce Eric Tate. He is the business representative for Teamsters Local 848. That's our local group here in town, and Eric is here with us tonight. And also, a number of our good operators have joined us this evening, and they're also available and willing to answer any questions you have. Although I am fairly new to Glendale, I'm not new to city government, unfortunately. There's a number of years I've got to turn my hair gray. But the last 17 years have been in transit. And I have to tell you, in coming to Glendale and considering coming to Glendale to enhance my government career, the contractor really made a difference. I interviewed MV before I interviewed as an employee here for Glendale, and the quality of MV's program is probably the most outstanding outside contracted service I have ever seen among the agencies here in Southern California. I've worked for an outstanding in-house transit operation, and I've seen lots of in-house and outside contracts, but I have to tell you, we are very lucky to have our local transit team and to have MV support. So with that, I offer our council, or our staff recommendation to extend the contract to MV for the next five years.
Okay, well, I, we're going to have to talk to Mr. Engel to find out why he's spent the last years in transit. We hope that he will settle down one of these days.
He's still waiting for dinner.
Let me see if we have a motion to second, before we go any further.
I wanted, could you come to the podium, please?
Before we go to questions, I want to get him...
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion to second. Mr. Quintero.
I would like to hear about some of your transportation background, so the public knows that the person running our, at least from the city end, running our section knows what she's talking about.
That would be over the six and a half minutes that Mr. ...
We're in the question period, and then we're going to get to a public comment also.
Brief bio.
I'm very, very pleased to be here. I probably, in my early years in working for city government, worked with dial-up ride programs in a number of smaller cities. And then I had an opportunity, actually fell into the opportunity to work in public transit with the city of Montebello, who had a transportation department operating Montebello bus lines. When I started, we had very similar conditions to Glendale, no maintenance facility, a really very, very old, average fleet age. And by the time I had left Montebello, we had a new transit facility, we had an average fleet age of six years, which meant basically replacing all of our buses. And we had increased our service by 46%, all totally funded and paid for. So I know what a good, award-winning transit system looks like, what it feels like, the team it takes to make that happen. We have a good team in Glendale, that I see that vision, I see that happening here. So I know kind of where we want to go for the next few years. And I've had the opportunity the last four years as a consultant to work with what I call the I-5 corridor transit systems throughout Los Angeles County, and basically helping them to achieve the same types of things that I was able to do in Montebello, from both financial to construction to operational issues. So with that, I have a good balance between city things and transit things, and have a really good vision for, I think, where we'd all like to, although we're almost perfect today, I'd like us to kind of build that system and have a neat thing to look forward to for the next five years.
Mr. Yusefian.
Don't run away, I got questions for you. Keep you up in here until you land at home. Question. There were issues about the fare boxes, the fact that some of the fare boxes are not working, there has not been audits done, we're not collecting enough money, and we got some numbers, even from staff, that shows the amount of riders and then fares somehow they don't match, you know? Things don't work forever. I mean, things break up. How do you deal with that in this contract, dealing with that equipment? Are you depending on him to save everything with Microsoft? I don't know. You guys should go to Mac, man, I'm telling you.
Yeah, we have a number...
There's something to those commercials.
Thank you, Councilmember Yusefian. We have a number of things we do. It's kind of a multi-pronged process. When you look at the data from last fiscal year, which is our total last year that we reported, we charge 25 cents a rider. Our average fare, which is kind of takes all the riders and the discounted people pays, senior rates and disabled rates, we took in 24 cents per person. So our deflection off the fare box is very, very low. Now, part of that money includes advanced sales of passes, fare sales that we do ahead of time. But for the most part, we're getting a close return to the total cost of what it costs to pay the fare, the 25 cents. So what we're doing now, we've actually just done a fare box audit, and we look at what the fares are collected and what's deposited into the system. We're doing that with MV. It looks like we're, at the same time, back to that 24 cents a person. So what happens is, understanding how that fare box works, if one part of it doesn't work, like a little tabulated part of it, it goes on bypass. It still accepts the money, it just doesn't say this passenger put in this quarter.
I thought that our contract says that we're expecting about 23 cents to accept for the last contract. When we got the numbers, it was more like around 19 cents. So, and these are our own information. So it doesn't jive with what you're telling me unless we're hoping to get that with this new contract. So apparently, what we were anticipating to get, which we, we said, okay, well, we will give you two cents differential, mistakes happen, it's actually more than that. And so what I wanted to know is, in the process of doing this contract, did we look into that to see maybe two cents was too little? Maybe we need to have more out there to allow for deviation? And if more deviation is not acceptable, then what is it that we need to do to make sure that we actually collect that 23 cents or 24 cents, whatever cents we're going to put in our contract? And hold their feet to the fire, that, hey, you have to make sure this happens? Because if they're not able to deal with that, maybe we need to look at some other company that deals with the maintenance of those fare boxes and make them in charge of those. Listen, you're going to give me this much, or you're going to pay it from your own pocket. So that was one thing. The other thing was, you said that the way you ran the contract was, this many hours, this is the age of the fleet. Now, which I think is a brilliant way of doing it, by the way. In the process of doing that, on the age of the fleet, did they take into account that our fleet, while it's old, it's in the process of being replaced somewhere down the line? So did they take that into account?
Yes, I'll go back to your fare box answer, and then, if I can remember all the questions, and then the fleet. On the fare box, there is no fare box percentage in the contract, as typically is written, or in the request for proposal. That is something we monitor on the side, as far as the fare box functioning and the deposits, and what the ridership is and what that deposit. So we have ways to kind of check and balance to make sure we're getting our money's worth. Nothing's, you know, the system's not broken. One of the other things are, as our buses is aging, so are our fare boxes. There's only two manufacturers of fare boxes here in the United States. And both of them have now combined to do what is called the Universal Fare System, Fare Box, and a new system that we're doing regionally with Metro as the lead here in L.A. County. They've been installed on most of the metro fleet, and they're working out the details to start to install it on the regional municipal operator fleet. And then we're next in line to get it as one of the sub-regional operators. So it's probably about two years away. What's happened is all the energy for those companies has gone into this new system, and they're not supporting as much the old systems that we currently have in place. So we're kind of making do, trying to get the parts. We have parts that are on backorder for six to nine months. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that what we have in place is currently being repaired and operated properly, to as much as we can get our hands on the materials and the, and spare boxes.
We can't get those new fare boxes installed in our place?
We are on the waiting list. There's a kind of a pecking order of how they're going to be installed. The first municipal operator, Culver City, was just installed beginning in January, and they're still in the testing process. So as they go through all of those other operators, then we're kind of that next tier, because we're, we're not part of the total regional first-tier system that does all that interconnection with Metro.
It has nothing to do with us paying?
No, we have a grant funding...
Given we paid, we still have to wait in line, because there's only one vendor.
We have grant funding already lined up for it, it's just a matter of, they can't make the fare boxes any faster and test them and get them into place. So partly, we're dealing with old equipment and a new technology that's going to come out.
And the second question?
Second question on the fleet. When we did the request for proposal, the fleet information they were given also had a replacement program for the year that those buses, the older buses, were going to be replaced. So you'll see in a detail that we have from when they turned in, the parts costs that are really higher now go down in the out-years. So the cost per year, when we break down the maintenance costs, does fluctuate. And so it really depends on the delivery of those vehicles. Now, the vehicles we're ordering right now, this year, will take eighteen to twenty months for delivery. So we're still in the middle of the contract by the time that takes effect.
And the fuel charges in here are what we are anticipating today, so as the fuel charges go higher, there'll be an extra that we'll have to pay in line?
Well, the fuel is a pass-through, because fuel is such an unpredictable commodity, it's a pass-through directly to the city. So built into the contract costs that are recommended is an inflationary factor based on what our current experience is with fuel. So if fuel goes totally haywire, or insurance goes totally haywire, we would come back to you with a potential adjustment to their contract.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, not so much a question, Catherine, but just some of my personal reflections. For those of you who might be thinking, well, MV is the incumbent, and incumbency has its privileges, we'll be discussing that also later when we do campaign finance reform. I want to say that I was a member of the selection committee back in 1999, was it? And there was no incumbent, we were, well, actually, there was laid law, I think we had. And laid law.
Lost.
Lost. And MV was by far the most impressive of the candidates back then, both with their technical abilities, their track record, and the enthusiasm of their employees. And I'm glad to hear that that's continuing. I do ride the B-line, in fact, I rode it today. I ride it often. It is always a clean ride. The bus operators are always friendly, very patient with both the people alighting and exiting the bus, as well as the crazy drivers that are on our Glendale roadways. The buses are a bit noisy, but that's a function of the age of the buses. And I know that we are going to be resolving that very, very shortly with some funding from the MTA. I think it is critical that we realize the presence of Eric Tate from the Teamsters. And how often do you see the representative from the labor union sending a hearty letter of support to the management, to the company itself? I think that speaks volumes. And it's important that MV continue to work. It's a reflection of their respect they have for their employees, the wages that they pay them, as well as their entire management system. It's nice to see you back, Mr. Tate, we haven't seen each other for a while, but welcome to Glendale. The B-line, folks, is a great bus system. It is a great bus system. Being on the MTA, I have exposure to all these local operators and these included operators and municipal operators. And there are very few bus systems that really do what we do. It's unfortunate that we got a late start in the game, and we didn't have our finger in the pie when they divided up the Prop. A funding for the eligible operators. Nevertheless, we do have a great reputation. And it was commented to me several times by the CEO of the MTA, Roger Snoble, about the great bus system we have in Glendale. He used to live in Las Felas, but he now lives in Glendale, and he would occasionally hop on the B-line once he came to Glendale to do some errands. So that's a great tribute and compliment. And I encourage everyone to take the bus, especially now. The buses are getting filled, but we're, of course, limited by our funding as to how we can expand those lines. They're safe, they're, you know, fun, if you can attach fun to riding a bus, they're very inexpensive. And I just applaud MV and their drivers and employees to continue the good work. I fully support the awarding of this contract. And I've gone through, I also heard some of the criticisms levied over the past several months. As I go through the evaluation criteria and the scoring that was given to MV Transportation, it's, I mean, you just can't ignore them, that they are a quality organization. I hope that when we build our CNG fueling center, as well as our maintenance facility, that it'll make the maintenance and operation even easier than we have it now. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. We don't have any other comments. Let me hear from the public, we have several questions. And thank you, Ms. Engel. We have, excuse me?
Speak.
Yes, we have Dr. Richard Esprit, followed by Barry Allen.
I think you went too far. Do you set the lights? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and Staff. I am Dr. Richard Esprit. I did a, by my own criteria of working out, trying to figure out how these four companies stacked up against the proposal. MV Transportation wound up, and this is using the California Highway Patrol inspection reports. I did pick up the inspection reports from all of the four different companies from the California Highway Patrol. Called them up, they delivered, I picked it up the next day. This is based on the number of buses that passed by MV. They had nine buses inspected, two of them passed, that was twenty-two percent. Diversified came up with ninety-two percent, twelve of the thirteen buses passed. This is the years of experience by working in the transportation industry. According to the report, MV Transportation has thirty-two years, they got three points. Diversified had ninety-three years of experience. This is the negative criteria. The first item there is the issue of a civil lawsuit. There was one civil lawsuit that was filed against MV Transportation in Minneapolis, Minnesota. There was also three ADA violations, lawsuits filed against them. One in New York, the other one in Texas, and the other one in San Francisco. There was also one death that was attributed within the last five years to First Transit. I did not put any negative points in for myself. However, First Transit got a negative ten points because of the fact that they've had a poor reputation with labor. And Southland Transit would have created a monopoly here in the city of Glendale by the Cabs, the Para Transit, and all of the fixed route system. This is how it comes out. MV Transportation came out with the lowest scoring, and Diversified came out with the highest scoring possible. One of the other interesting things is, I would like to know what this excellent management capabilities of MV Transportation is, and they call it superior, according to the staff reports. Is that superior to Miramar? Or what are we talking about as far as superior management? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Spirit. Barry Allen, followed by Lenore Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council Staff, I'm Barry Allen, Vanguard. Couple of reminder things. Several years ago, we did a fare box study, and we didn't get anywhere near twenty-three or twenty-four cents. If you've got twenty-five cents as your fare, and half that price, or fifteen on our calculations, is for seniors or handicapped or what have you, it doesn't average out to twenty-three cents or twenty-four cents. We were getting generally an average of nineteen cents. When we started getting averages of eleven and twelve cents, we knew there were problems. And shortly after that, for about a nine-month period, there were no fare box figures ready. They weren't there, they weren't available. The system was broken down. And that led us to speculate that certainly there could be some issues, and the city wasn't looking at them seriously, and MV wasn't looking at them seriously. But somehow or other, it was certainly in their favor because they reduced their billing a lot less by saying that they only had $20,000 of revenue instead of thirty deducted off of what the city would pay. Now, we also know that the city is considering ultimately a CNG facility. And right now, that MV unfortunately has to send their drivers or their fuelers out elsewhere to get fuel for the buses. Now, that's built into their expenses, which we see as their profit. Now, will there be a reduction in the amount that they charge if should we ever get our CNG facility open and we don't have to charge back that kind of, they don't have to use their fuelers as much and as often? And there was the other issue that we had seen several years ago, ongoing, that there were liquidated damages that were preset for malfunctions of the buses, destination signs, wheelchair lifts, and a number of those things. Last year, we didn't see any liquidated damages, which did not jive with the maintenance reports that we reviewed. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Lenore Solis, followed by Eric Tate.
Lenore Solis, resident of Glendale, and I'm going to tell you that I really love the B-line, I think it's wonderful, I think we're really a fortunate city to have such a wonderful service as this for a quarter, I mean, come on, it's wonderful. And I think it's so great, I would love for you to extend it down to the Atwater Village area. You talked about somebody who lived in Las Felas. And you know, I mean, you know that we have the Costco and the Mimi's Restaurant and the Toys R' Us, and Best Buy down on Las Felas, just a couple of blocks past San Fernando. And many residents of Atwater Village, which used to be the tropical part of, the annexed part of Glendale, shop, do all their shopping, their marketing, all of it in Glendale. I mean, you know, there's the closest market to Atwater would be the Vons that's right there on Las Felas and San Fernando, the Albertsons on Central and Chevy Chase. So a lot of them, and of course, many of them work at the Galleria, a lot of them now are working at the Americana, a lot of them are employed here in Glendale, a lot of them work for the city. So it would be really wonderful if someday, I know money's tight, if someday we could extend service down to include the Atwater area, it's just a couple of blocks, it's not, you know, we're not asking for a mile into LA. But a lot of the people that live in Atwater, they have to take the MTA, and then they switch over to the B-line, or they come down on the B-line and then they have to switch over. So it would be really nice if they could just do it a one-way trip, thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric Tate.
Good evening, I'm Eric Tate, business representative for all the B-line bus drivers in the city of Glendale. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak here briefly. I represent about a thousand drivers in the Los Angeles area. And I wanted to say that, I wanted to come this evening, which this is the first time I've come to a city council meeting in Glendale, I wanted to say that, you know, by far, this project here is one of my easiest accounts that I have to handle because of the few problems that I have, which I contribute to Jesse Suvage, the manager of the B-line. Right off, and I don't spend enough time with my members here, matter of fact, my steward who was here this evening, just Friday, wanted me to hang out with the drivers, and I couldn't because I had to run to another project to save a person's job. Here, you know, when I do come up here, and I want to apologize that I don't spend enough time with them here, you know, it's basically just here to, you know, handle minor problems, if any, or just shaking hands, which, you know, I like to do. So I just wanted to come and be in agreement with the recommendation that the staff has come up with, and hope that you guys would vote to extend or give them a new contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. The last card is John Monson, who puts in parentheses, "in case there are questions." Have you heard some questions that you would like to address?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm John Monson. In 2002, I appeared in front of this council and made promises that we would improve maintenance, improve driver morale, provide safe and reliable service, and provide stable management. We've done that. Promises that we made are promises that we've kept, that's a hallmark of MV. I'd simply like to say, I really appreciate our employees who drive buses. As a former bus driver myself, I really respect the job they do for your community. I want to thank you for allowing us to be of service, and certainly if you have questions about our firm, I'm available to answer them. Thank you.
All right, hang on one second, Mr. Yusefian. Let's see if there are any other comments or questions, don't go too far away, Mr. Monson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Monson, I remember I was here when you came to get the contract, and at the time, we did tell you that we were building a new facility for you to maintain the buses out of. I guess you're still waiting, and so are we. Let me ask you, and you used to get your fuel right here on San Fernando Road, now you have to go all the way to Burbank to get your fuel. So I'd like to get clarification of, one of the speakers is, since you have to drive further to get the fuel, when there is a new fueling station in Glendale, how would that reflect on our contract, if it will? Or as far as you're concerned, you're just getting a contract for a certain hour, so we may reconfigure routes so you go somewhere else? If I'm correct, let me know, I am. And the second thing is, not having the maintenance facility that you thought you were going to get in 2002, and I don't know if we're going to have it by the time this contract's over, how is that affecting your ability to do the maintenance? Because I've seen the maintenance facility, and it's like basically mechanics crawling on top of each other to get anything done. So that's what I wanted to know from you.
Yes, Councilmember. In terms of the fueling facility, if the city were to open a new fueling facility that would allow us to fuel with less labor, we would certainly negotiate with the city to reduce our fees accordingly to the amount of money that we saved. The city does provide the fuel for the fleet. With regard to the maintenance facility, we are fortunate that we have a facility here in the city of Glendale. That does save the city money because of the reduced amount of deadhead that's required every day. It would be nice to have a facility, we've made do for the past six years, I suspect we'll make do again. But a new facility would allow us to be more productive in the shop, I believe, would provide us more up-to-date equipment and facilities to maintain your fleet, which is becoming more advanced as technology advances, especially with the CNG buses. But in the meantime, we're still maintaining the fleet and will continue to do so. There is a component of our rate, which is the rent on that building, and certainly if the city were to provide facilities for us to use, we would again lower our rates accordingly to remove the rent costs out of our rate.
Thank you. Nice seeing you again.
Mr. Quintero.
Not for you, sir, but one of the speakers had, one of the speakers had a good idea in terms of going into Atwater Village. Is that something that we could do, or will the MTA prohibit us from putting together little?
Councilmember Quintero, each one of the regional transit operators, Metro being one of them, has what they call a reserve service area. So we would have to work with the MTA to see if that would work into their service delivery plan. One thing we want to do is to avoid running service on top of each other, because again, we're trying to take these regional dollars and spread them as far as we can to make sure we have mobility for the most number of people that we can. So looking at MTA's service plan over the next few years, we work very closely with the sectors, so if it made sense for them to pull some service off of Las Felas, and we can be there to, assuming that we have some money to run some service down that direction, we would do a cooperative program to make sure that service delivery kind of happened for our whole area. We couldn't just arbitrarily decide we're going to go down.
Yeah, I know, I knew that. But I do think it's a good idea to explore that, Las Felas and Glendale Avenue, or Glendale Boulevard, too, both try to do a loop. Both try to do a loop through there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. We have a motion and a second. Mr. City Clerk, if you could, hold the roll.
I don't believe I remember who the second is.
I moved it.
You did?
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmembers and juror.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could we hear the item at eight B?
At eight B is City Attorney regarding discussion of local election campaign.
Thank you for the enthusiasm.
Eight B is City Attorney regarding discussion of local election campaign limits on hard money contributions, in-kind contributions, ban on contributions by applicants with matters pending before the council or redevelopment agency, limits or bans on contributions by city contractors or licensees. At B1 is a motion directing staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kusakian. Let's begin, let's begin with our presentation. I think we're going to the City Attorney.
Sure.
All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is now the third report on campaign finance, what I'll characterize as campaign finance reform-related issues. The first was in July of 2007, the second was in January of 2008, and the third was scheduled for March, but because of a League of Women Voters Forum, which was scheduled and ultimately was scheduled and heard in late April, the matter is now before you in May. In response to council direction, I've now tried to focus on what would be characterized as the most common forms of campaign finance reform, rather than getting into the laundry list that I originally had in the report in July of '07, which I know even on early night was a lot to bite off, but considering that it was an extensive list of many issues, I think we've now focused on those that are the most common and hopefully will be of interest for council and spur debate. And those are the hard money contributions, essentially just a limit on contributions, whether it's by individuals, corporate entities, unions or employee organizations and the like. In-kind contributions, which are non-monetary but do have value, possibly regulating those. Bans or limits on contributions by applicants with matters pending before the council or redevelopment agency, and/or bans or limits on contributions by city contractors or licensees or those seeking public benefits, similar to what you might find in one of the attachments, which is the Pasadena, Measure B. The other issue is focused strictly on campaign contribution, either limits or bans related to corporations and/or employee unions. I do point out in the report, one of the difficulties in outright bans of contribution, or outright bans of contributions from employee associations here in Glendale is somewhat difficult due to a charter provision that we have, which prohibits employees themselves from individually contributing, and that creates a problem with an outright ban on employee associations. But certainly, we can discuss some limitations, and it may be folded into a campaign limit on hard money contributions as well. I've also addressed in the report for you the handling of excess campaign funds, what is done in other communities, what the law allows with regard to campaign funds, which remain after a successful or unsuccessful run for elected office locally. In addition, the next issue was the regulation of loans to the campaigns. And again, I put in some examples of what some cities do and the monetary limits that they might have. We touch on retirement of debt, and another way of putting it would also be off-year, what they call off-year campaign fundraising, whether it's to retire debt or to raise funds for an upcoming election. Some of the exhibits which I've attached, one was in Exhibit A, which was somewhat of a matrix. Councilmember Weaver in January requested somewhat of a matrix, and as I noted in my report, it was somewhat difficult to do, but I came up with something with, that showed kind of a flow of money to and from, and then as you follow down the left-hand column from top to bottom, the campaign contributions, whether it's from an individual lobbyist, I mentioned PACs, labor unions, et cetera, and then in the, those would flow from left to right to the candidate or candidate's committee. And I put the numerical values in that right-hand column are just placeholders. They don't represent my view or in fact, any person's view in the city. No one told me and said, "We'll put a $500 value in there." They're just placeholders to show you this is where the money would go. So, that was my attempt at coming up with a matrix to hopefully assist in making some sense of it. Exhibit B is a copy of the Charter Amendment that was adopted and then amended in, I believe, 2005 or 2006 by the city of Pasadena, sometimes known as Measure B, and that is their limit on campaign contributions to individuals that or others who are seeking public benefits. In other words, those people who are seeking either licenses, land use entitlements or the like, and for the most part, most of these limits are $25,000. There's one that's $50,000, and actually one that's less. Exhibit C, for your information, was a previous exhibit that I had in the January report, and it's just a list of a number of public agencies with campaign contribution limits, and some that have no limits, and also others that have limits on or bans on contributions from contractors or licensees. Exhibit D is the Campaign Reform Act in the city of Burbank, to give you an example of what our city that we most identify with has relative to campaign contribution limits. As I pointed out in the report, it's essentially a very straightforward $250 campaign contribution limit across the board to a person, from persons, and the word person is very broadly defined, to include not only individuals, but also corporate entities, partnerships, the like, and would apply to unions or employee associations. And lastly, an exhibit from the National Conference of the State Legislators, which note the type of campaign contribution limits in different states throughout the United States. With that, I'm prepared. Oh, I did note in the report, in one last item, the number of issues that I just summarized in one paragraph, that I didn't deal with, and it was kind of the summary of the laundry list that I gave you back in July of '07, issues that while you could tackle, my advice to you at this point, given the direction you've provided me, is to look at primarily the seven issues that you have before you determine how or if you want to handle those and how you want to handle those, and perhaps in the future, come back and deal with the issues involving, whether they're independent expenditure committees and some other more detailed reporting requirements, limits on cash contributions, different than state law, for example, and perhaps carve those out and tackle those later. So, I did not spend anything more than one paragraph, just not even not summarizing them, but just noting them as something that are not subject of this report, and sticking really to what would be considered the more common forms of campaign finance reform. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and get into further and more in-depth discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Let me ask my colleagues' preference on this. Would you prefer to go to the public or to have some input and then go to the public and come back, or what would you, what's the consent?
Public.
I have a threshold question for Mr. Howard.
All right.
Just to clear the air. Mr. Howard, three of us are up for reelection this coming April, and the decisions that we may or may not make today, but the, our participation in the discussion of limiting the amount of campaign contributions and some of the others, may have a direct effect on our ability to raise funds, as well as our potential opponent's ability to raise funds. Is there any conflict of interest or any impropriety that you're aware of if we, those running for election, participate in the decision-making process and may or may not come to a decision one way or the other on this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, while, well, the simple legal answer is no. Campaign contributions are not included, or let me put it this way, they're excluded from the definition of income, which may be, which may form the basis for a conflict of interest because of essentially the change in income that may or may not occur. Campaign contributions are not considered income. So, the straightforward answer is no. My preference would have been to, and as you recall from the first report I provided, was just a few months after the last election, so my preference would have been to have it heard earlier, but because of circumstances beyond, beyond not only my control, but also because of a forum that was put on, as well as the need to start paring it down and getting to the point we're at now, you're probably never going to be in a position where someone is not running for election. You have three seats upcoming in April '09, but you have an election cycle literally starting right on the heels of that for two seats. Legally, no. There's no limit. There's no restriction.
You're sure? Because if you'd like, Mr. Weaver and I and the public could work it all out.
I think without a quorum, it may be somewhat difficult.
Okay, all right. All right, so, let's go to the public then. Let's see, our first speaker is Barry Allen, followed by Monica Marquez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. I think, Mr. Howard, your matrix is, matrix is very good. There were some things that I didn't see on there that I had a problem with, slate mailers, independent expenditure committees, and the, and looking at some of the other issues, I didn't see, for instance lobbyists, Glendale doesn't have lobbyists. There's no provision in our municipal code or the charter for lobbyists, so that needs to be defined. And I also see that enforcement is left to the city clerk, and we've seen so far that the city clerk is not enforcing either complaints having to do with any of the Political Reform Act issues. They've all had to go to the FPPC or to the district attorney. Now, one of the things that has come up, of course, we have had discussions on what I can do with my campaign fund after I've been elected. Now, we have one council member that says, "I'm going to use that campaign fund and I'm going to make contributions to different causes that I think are important in the city." And he does that. Another council member says, "Hey, that's not what the people gave you that money for." Well, the public gave that money to that person so that he could affect an election, a reelection, and things of that nature. Now, we have a situation where Mr. Weaver has his very own personal 501(c)(3), so he can take his funds that are left over from his campaign and give it to himself. And we'll never know how those funds have been spent. So, I think that is another issue that we have to look at as we take, as we take a serious look at the complexities. Relative to some of these specific issues, I think that the labor unions, as any other entity on here, should be limited to $500. And that would be the amount that I would say that they should give. I think that the prohibitions of anyone who has business before the council, the redevelopment agency, or the housing authority should not be, should be prevented or prohibited from making contributions six months before, six months after. Thank you. Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Monica Marquez, followed by Renee Leisk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am Monica Marquez, President of the League of Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank. The League of Women Voters was formed when women first gained the right to vote. The League has been in the Glendale community since 1940. Our website is LWVGlendaleBurbank.org. The League never supports or opposes political parties or candidates for office. However, after studying consensus, the League may advocate on political issues. The League of Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank believes that campaign contribution limits are a good idea for Glendale. We believe that access to government and the political process is a fundamental principle of our democracy. We encourage all citizens to participate in government, not just by voting, but by running for elective office. One of the barriers to running for office is the cost involved. It costs money to reach the voters, money for mailers, signs, postage, and phones. Campaign contribution limits would lower the overall cost of election by imposing caps on how much any person or organization can contribute. Another concern is the appearance or existence of impropriety. Candidates who receive disproportionately large contributions from a single or a few donors, such as developers, can appear beholden to those interests. Campaign contribution limits ends that situation. The League position does not contain a specific dollar amount, preferring that it be worked out in the legislative process. The League of Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank urges this council to enact campaign contribution limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Renee Leisk, and I would say while Renee is coming up, I would just point out that the council, in one form or another, has been in session for now 12 hours today.
Hi, my name is Renee Leisk. Hi to the mayor and the members of the city council. I'm with the Glendale Democratic Club, but I'm really here as a person who's lived in Glendale for 11 years and watched our campaign funds go from insane to scary. And I couldn't encourage the council more to institute some kind of reforms because we're out of step with our sister cities. And when I tell people I know whom I work with from other cities the situation here, they look at me askance. And just as a side note, as a citizen of the city, anything that lessens the amount of campaign mail I get in my mailbox is a good thing. Thank you very much. I'm glad you're addressing this.
Thank you, Ms. Leisk. Herbert Milano, followed by Lori Collins.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council. My recommendation to you is, simple is better. If you're going to move in this direction, my suggestion is that instead of creating significant regulatory controls as to who and who cannot contribute, that it is so much better to just limit the amount to a flat rate across the board. My suggestion is $250 for the following reasons. It has been used in Burbank and many other cities, but I think that the larger the city, the smaller amount. If you had a choice between receiving $250 from contributors out of Burbank or $100 from contributors of LA, you'll get a lot more money out of Los Angeles if that were the case, and if you could do that. So, if you know 100 individuals who believe in your position, that's 25,000. If you know 200 individuals, that's $50,000 to run a campaign in Glendale. So, it is my belief that the smaller the number, the better, because it better represents that we are a larger city than Burbank. My other suggestion is that there be no off-year office holder account. You know, it troubles me whenever I see on Form 460, in the interim periods after the election, money's being contributed to your campaign funds, and then finding that within the year, there's been a decision being made about that particular entity. Here today, a few minutes ago, we have NV Transportation presenting their case before you as the vendor of choice. And how many of you receive money from NV Transportation? You know, it is, I can go and look at Form 460 and find that they made contributions to you. So, how are we going to say, is the presentation they give to us true and honest and completely arms-length? You know, it creates doubt. It could be perfectly fine as an organization, but it creates doubt within the public with regard to your ability to be able to choose effectively, strictly on the merits of the vendor that comes before you. The other suggestion I have is that all loans to be repaid by the time of the election. This is a trick that is used often for somebody who's campaigning, lends himself $30,000, and then expects after the campaign to be receiving the money from individuals who actually have, again, interest contracts or pending decisions from the city council. So, again, my suggestion, make it simple, make it across the board. You already have a template that has worked successfully for the city of Burbank. Make it simple, put it forward, and hopefully put it in the Charter Amendment for this November selection. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Milano. Lori Collins, followed by Ellen Assatrian.
Good evening. My name's Lori Collins. Thank you for addressing this very important matter, and thank you to the city attorney for his comprehensive report. The ordinance should apply to all elected officials and should include all the elements included in the city attorney's report. Please also consider, including in the ordinance, reducing cash contributions to $50, aggregation of contribution limits from businesses, shareholders, and directors, and meaningful and timely reporting requirements. The ordinance should also include a ban on acceptance of contributions from applicants for public benefits for a period commencing 12 months prior to the council, considering applicant's request, and for 12 months after the council takes action. The appearance, the appearance in some times, in some cases, reality of pay-to-play harms the public and its trust in government and must be addressed. Please do not require voter approval of the ordinance. It is within your discretion and surely your obligation to this city to address campaign finance limits and pay-to-play. Solve for the upcoming election issue. the upcoming election issues by making the ordinance effective after the April of '09 election. Placing the ordinance on the ballot opens up, for example, the issue of pay-to-play to mudslinging, and also may play into the hands of well-funded proponents of the status quo. Again, thank you for taking on campaign finance reform. Reform benefits you, and it benefits your constituents.
Thank you. Ellen Asatrian, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Draymond, councilmember, city staff, my name is Ellen Asatrian. I'm here on behalf of our meeting National Committee Glendale chapter to voice our support for placing limits on campaign contributions. We find it crucial to begin a process in our city through which elected officials do not feel indebted to particular community members or developers due to large contributions to their campaigns, and we hope that you will move to place limits on the contributions to campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Margaret Hammond, followed by David Fortune.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I happen to be completely in favor with the League of Women Voters view, and again, feel that the campaign limits will be good for the city of Glendale. It will cut down on a lot of problems and competition amongst the people that are campaigning and some who cannot afford or do not have large war chests. It will even out the playing field. I think that the number one is, again, using the Burbank matrix, the city of Burbank matrix for their campaign limits is a very good idea. It seems to work very well for them. And the other thing is, part of it, is limiting the flat rate contribution to $250, and again, limiting off-year contributions. Thank you very much for considering this matter.
Thank you, Margaret. David Fortune, followed by Lenora Solis, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, staff. I just thought it might be helpful to know what we're talking about here. So, I grabbed some numbers from the 2007 and 2005 election results. In 2007, the top four candidates, the ones who received the most votes, they had an average of $138,485 that they raised. That was distorted by one candidate who raised close to a quarter of a million dollars. If we take the three candidates and exclude that candidate, the average was $103,000. If you look at the 2005 election, the four candidates with the most votes averaged $121,700 in contributions, and the three that got the most votes averaged $138,700. So, it takes over $100,000 to be elected to the city of Glendale. I don't think there's any question about that. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about campaign reform. I also looked at the 2005 election, and I just want to cite a couple of things. And this is not to point out anybody and say there's anything illegal, but one of the candidates received from the firefighters $5,000, and from the Glendale management, $11,000. That's $16,000. Now, both of these organizations come before the city for wage negotiations, and I'm sure the candidates, while they do not, well, they do take into consideration, I think, at least they remember who contributed to that campaign when the negotiations are coming before them. I'm not saying it's illegal, because there's nothing illegal about that, but we know that money is the mother's milk of politics. In terms of, let's see, okay, a lot of people speak against limiting campaign contributions. They say that it's a matter of public record. And so it is. And those numbers that I've cited are a matter of public record. But I doubt that few people in the audience, in the television audience, in the community, know that it takes over $100,000 to elect somebody to the city council. Now, we've got an ordinance here. Let me suggest something creative for Councilman Nigerian, because he has a concern that both he and Councilman Yusefian and Councilman Quintero have large war chests now, and that might, you know, work to the disadvantage of other candidates. Let me suggest that they take all that money, they pull it in one fund, they distribute it among all the candidates in the race, and from here on out, if we adopt a $250 or $500 limit, that they be subject to that. So, that's about all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fortune. Lenora Solis, followed by Nancy Kent.
Lenora Solis, resident of Glendale. Yes, it's the time of year again, and the campaign will get going, and you know, we do need some limitations. Can't believe it's been since July of last year that we first reached this topic. I think Mr. Howard's paper on this subject is excellent. I think all of you know far more about this than I do. I think what is important here is full disclosure. I think that if the numbers that this gentleman cited are accurate, I think it's incredible that we would have to spend $100,000 to win a seat in our fair city, and yet we can't find a shelter for the homeless. I would hate to have to ask somebody to give me X number of dollars, and you know, when the money really could be better spent, you know, paying down the capital debt at my church, for instance. I just think it's really important that we do have some kind of limitation, because clearly, based on the numbers, it's out of control. We need to have full disclosure so that if anybody has received money from anyone who's standing before you, before you vote, you need to disclose that. I think disclosure is important, and I think that, I think it's a shame that individual employees are prohibited from donating money. I believe in the individual right to exercise their political action in whatever way they see fit. And I think that when you allow an association, be it a representation of management or some employee group, that they are gonna wield the money for their associates, that gives them too much power. I think it's a shame that an individual employee doesn't have the right to donate to the candidate of their choice. If anything, I think there's an issue with that when it comes to our right as individuals to donate to the candidate of our choice. This is on your shoulders, gentlemen. I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenora. Nancy Kent.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. Thank you very much for having this on your agenda. And it would be wonderful if all the things mentioned tonight could get passed, but even if you just do one of these, that will be one more reform than we have now. Regarding campaign contribution limits, we keep hearing that Burbank has a $250 limit, but they also have a primary and a runoff election, and you can give $250 for each of those. So, I really think of them, Burbank is having a $500 limit. And it's not on the agenda tonight to have a primary election, but I hope Glendale will not ever go that route. If we do any change, we should go for instant runoff voting rather than a primary. If you do have a campaign limit, I hope it will include adjustment with the Consumer Price Index, and that it will apply across the board to all entities, corporations, unions, everything. I'm glad that a loan limit is suggested in the report, and also limiting the period of time for collecting contributions and retiring campaign debt. And I like the idea of getting rid of the excess after the election. I believe in Burbank, they give it either to a political party, a nonprofit, or prorated refunds to the donors. I'm a very big fan of Pasadena's anti-conflict of interest legislation, the Taxpayer Protection Act. I'm glad that's in the report. It would be wonderful if you would do something like that. The wisest reform is voluntary public campaign financing, but that's rather hard sell to accomplish that. Somebody, one of the times this has been on the agenda, has suggested controlling how people campaign on cable TV. I don't understand why someone brought that up, but I think that that's impossible to control. And, let's see, these reforms should not be implemented for the 2009 election because funds have already been collected for that. And last point is, thank you for postponing this for the League of Women Voters Forum on this, and I believe someone also chewed you out for delaying so long. But thank you again for considering these things.
Thank you, Nancy. That, I, it was more than one that chewed us out for that. Anyway, alright, that was our last speaker card. Let us go to, let me go to my colleagues, and let me just start right down the road. We started with Mr. Weaver last time. Let's start with Mr. Yusefian this time. Let's see if we start putting hash marks under columns with councilmembers' names on it, what we come up with.
Well, I've run eight campaigns. Some mine-
Are you bragging or complaining?
No. Sometimes it's a complaint, believe me. Some was mine, and some was other people's campaign. I've run campaigns that spent $17,000 to get a person elected. Person, of course, had an advantage. Her name was Ginger Bremberg. It was very easy to get her elected. I've also spent over $140,000 in 2005 to get re-elected. When I got elected in 2001, I spent only $37,000. The difference in four years was humongous, and I couldn't believe it, what it cost to do that. Some people came up in here and said, "Please don't send me any mailers." My answer to that individual and everybody else is, "Please read the first one you get, so we don't have to keep sending you 15 of them." Time after time after time, it has shown what is very effective is those mailers that we all hate, because after the 15th one, we take the chance to read at least one of them. And it's not just me talking. Talk to any political consultant, going back 50 years, will tell you the same exact thing. In many cases, the problem is not just the people who are running. The problem also is the people who are voting. If they take the chance to read the stuff the first time, we're not crazy to go out there and beg for the money, so we could go out there and send all this stuff out. I don't beg anyone money for myself individually. I don't. I work for it. But I found myself going out there, trying to raise money, and the first time I did it, I raised $18,000 in 1993, and it was one of the hardest things I had to do. Walk over, shake somebody's hand, and say, "Could you please give me 50 bucks so I can run for council?" I had never done that in my life. The hardest things I had ever to do. As time has gotten out, I've gotten more educated and learned. You send a thousand invitations, 100 people show up. That is the standard. Thousand invitation, to print it, to make three copies of it, envelopes, stamps, so on and so forth. 100 people show up, and you have no clue how much they're gonna give you. Some give you $2, which I've gotten, so I give you $2,000, which I've gotten also. So, my issue is more about people who write you a check for $20,000. I had offer people write me a check for $100,000, and I'm not lying, and I have refused to accept it, because I think it's insane to accept that amount of money. So, as far as I'm concerned on this issue, we need to put some type of a limits, because there have been some major campaign donations, large amounts that even some of us on this diet have seen the numbers and said, "Holy cow." Did you see that number from such-and-such person? And, yeah, that's the amount of money that goes around sometimes. As for myself, I will tell you, I don't trade money for votes. If you give me a million bucks, I'm not gonna vote for your project if it's a bad project. If you give me no money, I'm not gonna vote for your project if it's a bad project. Makes no difference for me. Let me tell you the amount of money I've received from Mr. Caruso till now. Zero, not one cent. Not that Mr. Caruso didn't offer. Offered many, many times. I just didn't think it was appropriate. Same thing with Glenda Galleria. I have not accepted any money from them. They're both great people. We need them in this city, but I thought it was not appropriate thing to do. In my opinion, I think we have raised a lot of money, among three of us. We have accounts. We raised money. I tried to make sure that my campaign kickoff is late enough that we would have dealt with these things a long time ago. And just to make sure, I put a cap of $150 on it, just to make sure. But before that happened, two of my other colleagues had more fundraisers, and I had money left over. I gave, in a way, $30,000 of that money away to good, worthy organization in this city. Not to my own 501(c)(3), by the way. To good, worthy organizations. I think, in my opinion, we need to have a good, comprehensive campaign reform package put on the ballot for the people to vote on. And that's gonna take some work. On top of that, I think personally, that we should put a maximum of $1,000 per person for this campaign to end. My goal is to end the five, six, 10,000-dollar checks. With $1,000, it will give an advantage also to the person who is not an incumbent to be able to raise the $100,000 that he needs. That's 100 people. He can raise that person. So, I think we do an interim, and then we do an actual ordinance. We put it on the ballot. We will talk about it during the election, and we get it passed. I will tell you that I will campaign for that. I'll be out there pushing that ordinance to be passed. So, that's where I stand on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. And I just want to ask my colleagues, and it's no reflection on Mr. Yusefian. I didn't want to interrupt you. But the hour is late. We have a ways to go. We have oral communications yet. If we could help the city attorney by giving him our input on those issues directly, and we can comment on our campaign experiences perhaps another time, because we have one council member that's under the weather, and we got a long way to go. So-
I can't give anecdotes?
You can do whatever you like. I'm just asking that we sort of get to the heart of this. Don't choke me.
You pulled up the ladder after he gave this. Come on. Well, I have, first of all, I feel, I feel very uneasy dealing with this issue with an upcoming election, and it is reflected in my question, my initial question to Mr. Howard. Do I want to win next April? Assuming that I did, assuming that any candidate does, as an incumbent, the best chance I would have at winning would be to vote right here and now for a $250 campaign contribution limit. So, I, aside from being a candidate, I think that a contribution limit is a good thing, because it takes away some of the appearance of impropriety when you get these huge contributions. But if a challenger wants to mount a decent camp- But if a challenger wants to mount a decent campaign against an incumbent, he's going to have to come close to perhaps even outspending, raising more money than that incumbent, so his name gets out, so he can send those mailers, you know, Mr. Jones, oh, I didn't know Mr. Jones, another one from Mr. Jones, and he sends these out and does his marketing. So I feel very, you know, I feel very uneasy. Part of me says, yeah, if we put in a campaign, and plus I've got a, I've got a campaign war chest currently, right now. So if I were to vote for any limit, I really would, I mean, I was almost hoping that Mr. Howard would say, "No, you're conflicted because your actions are going to be, you know, self-serving to the extent that I'm, I'm seeking to win the next election." So I just feel very uneasy about the whole thing, being a sitting candidate for an election less than a year away. That being said, I think we can all agree that, that a large campaign war chest is not the single ingredient to a successful election. We saw last election that the quarter of a million did not win the election, and rather modest amounts, I don't, I don't, I haven't read the 460s, but rather modest amounts resulted in a, in a successful run. Is there anything wrong with the people voting for this? I don't know. I'm hearing from well-respected groups. My colleagues in the League of Women Voters are suggesting, others, individuals suggesting that we now vote for limits. But is that a broad sentiment throughout the community? I'm not sure. I see the folks that are speaking out against it are very vocal, and they're very sure, and they're very, you know, they're very clear as to where they want us to go. In terms of the labor unions, the prohibition for the individual employees making donations, I think becomes a problem when we limit the labor unions to their, to any sort of limitation. I think if you're going to limit the labor unions, I think you've got to let the employees give their donations, because otherwise they're being, I don't want to say disenfranchised, but they're being deprived of their right of the First Amendment to support a candidate of their own choosing. Whereas previously, in theory, their support could funnel through the labor union. Back to Burbank. Burbank does have that two hundred and fifty dollar limit, but they also have a mail-in ballot. So, I think just to look at Burbank's two fifty without, without looking at the other differences in their election process, such as the, the primary and the mail-in, I think would be a mistake. I think you have to take each city's election as a whole. But, you know, I'm sort of throwing these questions out, but I guess, you know, I'd like to win next April, and I don't want the appearance of impropriety to be hanging over any of our heads. So I would support a, a very low amount, maybe five hundred dollars as a campaign contribution limit right now. Lifting any limits on our employees, applying that limit to the labor unions, we heard that today. I was accused by a couple of my, my favorites about being desperate for labor union endorsements and sending out glossy flyers. So, that's what I would stand on this issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Quintero.
Just a quick, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see.
Oh, that's quite all. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just a quick point. The issue of lifting the ban on employees, that is a charter limitation, and that would require a vote of the people.
Now, Mr. Howard, it's not that we can't limit labor union contributions, we can't, we can't take them away.
My opinion is, based upon the court cases and the underpinnings for the, the basis for a ban, is that because the courts have noted when you ban, and for example, federal election law bans labor union contributions, the court notes that the reason those bans are upheld is because the employees can make individual contributions. In our case, it's almost the flip side. Employees cannot make individual contributions, and therefore, I think that you, you are compelled to allow labor unions to make, have to make some form of campaign contribution. Whether you limit, I think it's, it's consistent with, with the cases, it's okay to limit it, but you can't ban it. Unless we did, as Councilman Najarian suggests, ultimately put before the people a ballot measure that may include campaign contribution reform, and also lift the ban on employee contributions.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
Well, I've been for campaign contribution limits for many, many, many years, but I must admit, I was completely baffled and very unhappy when that Supreme Court case, and what was the case?
The most recent one, Randall versus Sorrell, is that the most recent one?
The one, the one years ago that equated giving money to campaigns to free speech.
Oh, Buckley versus Vala.
Right. Buckley, right. And what year was that?
I believe it was in the seventies. I'd have to go back and check.
Yeah, I was, sometime in the seventies. So basically, that Supreme Court case left a huge elephant in any campaign reform, or put another way, drove a truck through any campaign reform, because it basically held, or the, it's not what it held, the issue becomes twofold. One, that a wealthy individual can spend any amount of money he wants, or she wants, on a campaign. So no limits apply to an individual putting his own money into a campaign. And number two, outside individuals, or groups, or associations, or unions, or businesses, or anything else, they can spend whatever they want on behalf of someone's campaign or against someone's campaign. So whatever we do tonight or in the coming weeks as we work this out, let's keep that in mind, that a wealthy individual will be able to spend as much as he or she wants on a campaign, and that outside groups will organize and run phone banks and do mailers and do anything else, that employ people to knock on doors, anything else that they want to promote someone's candidacy or to go against someone else's candidacy. So that's exactly what the reality of the situation is. And then another point to make that I find kind of interesting is that the candidate who, I didn't realize it was two fifty, I knew it was over two hundred thousand, but in the last election, the candidate that raised probably double what everyone else raised, two hundred thousand or more, he lost. And he was an incumbent, and he lost. So so much for the power of raising money and somehow manipulating elections. Then another issue here in the city of Glendale specifically, is the ability for some candidates to go on cable TV and basically not have to pay. Some candidates pay money for their ads and so forth. Other candidates go on cable TV and doesn't cost them a thing. Or maybe they pay a thousand dollars to run cable ads, and you realize they're on there 24/7. Boy, that thousand dollars sure goes a long way. So I'd like, if we're going to go down this path, we can't do anything about the constitutional right that I cited, those other two constitutional rights. But hopefully, we can do something to somehow monitor the free television exposure, because I think that puts some candidates in a much more favorable place than, than others. I do think we can come up with some limit, and that limit has to be a flat rate for all individuals, for business, for an employee association, for a union, for whoever. So one size fits all in terms of what you can, what you can give. And I think two hundred and fifty dollars isn't even close to reality. I think that'll open up the door even more to outside expenditures that aren't going to be really analyzed like a campaign, like our 700 forms. And then in terms of the prohibition before and after a vote, I think three months before, three months after, and really, you're talking about six months, I think that would work fine. So, and in terms of limiting funds to this election, how in the world are we going to limit funds to this particular election when one of the council members has fifty-five thousand, I think the other one had the same, or fifty-three, and I have forty-three? So we're going to limit a thousand dollars this election? Give me a break. We've already, you know, we're halfway there. I don't think, I'll probably need less than a hundred thousand for this election. So there's nothing we can do for this election. We just put it on the ballot, and I'm sure the voters will pass it. And the next election, everybody will start on an even playing field. So, that's my.
Okay. Mr. Weaver.
Well, cost of running elections now is totally obscene. I remember talking to a former mayor of Glendale, who served on this council in the eighties and early nineties. I asked him one time, "How much does it cost to run for city council?" He says, "Oh, seven, eight hundred dollars." That was the late eighties.
CJ Woodrow.
And, you know, that sounded good when I first ran. When I first ran in ninety-three, I think my wife and I took a second mortgage on the house and owed ourselves ten thousand dollars, because we didn't have any money who knew me. And I had to compete with the big boys, so to speak. Wasn't easy. Now, today, it's almost like keeping up with the Joneses. Well, he's going to get two hundred thousand, well, I got to get two hundred and fifty. No, we got to add the other three hundred thousand. Instead, obscene is out of whack. And no matter what we end up with, I'll be happy with anything that tries the love of the playing field. We started with the absentee ballot process, that eliminated a lot of cost right there by book. You know, if you do, you put out a, trying to estimate cost, you want to put limits on. If you mail to all the registered voters in Glendale, and you do one with a letter and a return envelope for money, and you put out one flyer, and you get some yard signs, you're easily setting around fifty thousand dollars right there in this city, over eighty-two thousand voters. And if you only do the high propensity, you might cut that in half. And if you put two hundred and fifty dollar limits on, you're talking, as has been said, a heck of a lot of people giving you the same amount of money. Just isn't going to happen. And that's not counting using telephone, TV ads, anything you do. You know, I don't know where you bring it down to a sizable, sizable amount. Yeah, I think TV isn't fair, as I've watched in the campaigns, I've been in, and I've been in six of them now, my own campaigns, I managed my own campaigns. I watched a lot of candidates on TV every single day, on TV for weeks and weeks and weeks on end. I never got on one. Is that fair? Is that love of the playing field? I don't think so. The associations, I wish the associations didn't give a penny. I've argued, if you got that money, want you to give it to different groups in Glendale. Give it to scholarships, give it to, give it to the community and win some brownie points. More often than not, the associations are going to back the incumbents. And the last election, three out of the four didn't back me at all. I still won. But the point is, they feel that obligation to do that. And I hate to see them spending that money. Hardy, when's the next 460 due?
Next 460 will be due actually in June, July 31st, end of June.
And we're sitting here making decisions, as Mr. Quintero said. No disrespect, but my three commits running for reelection have already had fundraisers. It'd be interesting if they would tell the public and the transparency, I think Mr. Quintero said it, how much money they've raised and how much in kind do they get. Mr. Usakian did his at the Renaissance. That's a glorious place. He made, he might have raised a lot of money, but did he pay for the use of facility and everything? Or did he get it in kind? That counts up too. Now, the playing field is not level. And I don't know how you're going to get it down to level. I don't see it. You can put on, I don't care, two hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand. I don't care if it's six months before, six months after. It's helping to bring down the playing field to a more level spot. But to sit here and say, "Well, no, we'll do it after the next election." Oh gee, then if Mr. Draymond and I run, well, we're the ones that have to do it, and the three of them are done. I don't think that's fair either. We ought to do, if we're going to do it, put an interim on now. Takes us to the election, put on the ballot, and as Mr. Usakian said, let the, let the incumbents discuss that along with the others during the campaign. Somebody's got to be equal. And you're not going to get it if we don't do something right now today. I think you're hearing everybody talk about the two fifty, five hundred thousand. Well, pick a number. Do it. There's things on here that we haven't talked about, independent committees, and I'm sure you've all read in the paper about the gentleman out in the West Valley that's running, and his father's up in Sacramento with an independent committee that is just breaking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars per son. And his son doesn't even know his father's doing it. It's all independent. You don't think that politicians aren't going to find independent committees more and more appealing if you bring the limits down? Sure they are. I didn't know they were spending for all these brochures that are going out. I had nothing to do with it. And the public will get up and say the same thing they're saying now about us getting money from associations. Oh, sure, you're not getting it. Yeah, you got the five hundred thousand out there from these people that have, corporations or whatever, that have set up these independent expenditures and mailed flyer after flyer. There's always going to be a way to try to get around what the intent is. I started off by saying, the whole process right now is obscene. Way too much money is being spent. And I'll do whatever my colleagues want in getting it down, but I want to see it done now, at least as an interim. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kusakian, did you want to weigh in as an elected official, or if so, I'll wait for you.
Actually, well, actually, I did want to just set something straight that was said earlier. Mr. Allen made some comments that made it seem as though perhaps the city clerk's office or staff is in collusion with trying to hide campaign contribution statements from candidates. We, you know, take great pains in making sure that the forms are filed properly on time, but as was noted, as he alluded to, we do not have the staff to necessarily scrutinize each document carefully. That is one of the reasons why we make sure that as soon as those forms are turned in and processed in our office, they're placed on the internet, so individuals who are interested in knowing who is contributing to their candidates can find that information out by going online and examining the documents themselves. If there is an issue that comes up, they can also report it to FPPC. We work with FPPC directly, the Fair Political Practices Commission, for those who don't speak in acronyms, who are based out of Sacramento. And, you know, oftentimes when we come across a typographical error, we don't think that typographical error oftentimes constitutes, you know, malicious act of malfeasance to mislead the public. We just make sure that individuals in office or candidates make sure to correct those typographical errors. And that is just what I want to add to the discussion. The other thing I want to mention, Councilmember Quintero and others, is that in talking about appearances on television programs, oftentimes candidates, I know myself when I was running for office, use those opportunities to educate voters, particularly limited English proficiency voters on the process, how to vote, where to vote, where to go to to ask questions, where to go to to ask questions. And that is something also to take into consideration. If, you know, we were all sitting in the same budget study session earlier this morning, then we all agree that we're going to be even more limited in our funds than what we're able to do in the next couple of years, and as far as doing outreach and education. And sometimes campaigns are... And sometimes campaigns or organizations or other groups or individuals may play a role in providing information to the public where the government can't afford to do so. That's just my two cents.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. I have a few comments. First of all, Mr. Weaver went, "What makes you think I'm going to be running for reelection?" Begin with.
You're not.
But anyway, well...
He's the smart one. There's the press.
Okay. Well, the only thing I want to say about my previous run or runs for council, all right, who has the laughing box out there?
Somebody's cellphone. That's, somebody's cellphone keeps ringing.
Can we please either shut it off or take it outside, please? Thank you.
Person does not know.
Appreciate that. The only thing I want to say about it is that when I ran for office a little over a year ago, I had stated during my campaign that I would support campaign reforms, and I said it then, I meant it, I'm going to say it now, I mean it now. In certain regard, it's very liberating to finally get to talk about this, because we've had to wait for a variety of things, for a variety of issues, as the city attorney pointed out, some of it beyond our control. And there's just only so many things you can do at one time as an elected body, and we've had a busy, busy year. But I'm glad we're here now. Let me, I want to get a little more specific with what my views are. I think there should be a thousand dollar limit, and let me tell you why I don't support two hundred and fifty dollars. Couple of reasons. And I've been saying this periodically through this debate, and when we've talked about it in dribs and grabs. One is that the person you're going to hurt the worst with a two hundred and fifty dollar limit is the non-incumbent, the challenger. I know, I've been there, and I wasn't one of the people who raised a hundred thousand My colleagues up here as incumbents, they're nice fellows, the bottom line is, if you limit them two hundred and fifty dollars, that's a whole nother fundraiser. The reach of an incumbent is great, and just as Mr. Yusefian was pointing out, he limited his fundraiser to a hundred and fifty dollars per person. I'm sure, he didn't mention, I'm sure he did just fine with his fundraiser. For a non-incumbent...
Twenty-five thousand.
All right. For a non-incumbent, a challenger, for most non-incumbents, most challengers, twenty-five thousand dollars for a single event would be very unusual and very gladly received. You don't have the, you hope you can be so lucky as to find campaign contributions at two hundred and fifty dollars apiece. And if a thousand dollars comes in, my goodness, that's absolutely amazing, and you wonder what you did that day, what you communicated to somebody that day that helped you to do that. So, I, the other thing is, we are not the city of Burbank. We just aren't. They have different political dynamics in that city. It's an all-mail-in ballot, so it's an entirely different kind of campaign, and was pointed out, somebody was bound to point it out, was the fact that they have a primary. So, it really isn't two hundred and fifty, it's actually five hundred. So, I would like to see a thousand dollar limit, I'd like to see it more or less across the board. A thousand dollars, individual, corporate, union, union as well. We can limit the unions. We can't say no to unions because we have this other issue in our charter. We can't deny the right of an individual as an employee of this city to give away their right to contribute to a campaign in any way, so, but we can certainly limit it to a thousand dollars. And, so let me just look at this report. The limits on in-kind contributions was one heading here, and I see that as a thousand dollar...
That should be thousand too.
Thousand dollar limit.
Yep.
The next heading is, "Limiting or Banning Campaign Contributions by Agency Contractors, Applicants, or Licensees." I say the same amount. Limiting contributions from corporations and unions, I would advocate the same amount. Use of excess campaign funds, well, that, I'm open to some conversation, I'm open on all of this, the conversation, but I don't have a firm view on that at this point. I would like to see it perhaps, that particular aspect, that particular limit go into effect at the next election. Regulating loans to campaigns, I think it should be a ten thousand dollar limit on that. Sorry about that, folks. Let's see. Retirement of campaign debt and raising funds for future campaign. There's a part of this that's talking about a hundred and eighty days as a timeframe to do that, and that's what I support. I think that's a very good timeframe. That's on page six of the report, by the way, if you're interested.
Six months.
Yeah, page six.
So, six months.
Yeah, exactly.
Six months to retire your debt.
Yeah, and because I think that's a very reasonable amount of time. Then some other comments. One of the speakers mentioned that they felt it should be applied to all elected officials, not to city council. I agree with that as well. Someone was talking about indexing the amount. I think that is a, I think that's a good idea as well, because, by the way, no matter what, we as elected officials try to craft here, it doesn't mean that, for example, Charter Cable is going to say, "Well, city of Glendale put some limits on, so we're going to roll back the cost of our advertising." Glendale News Press, whoops, well, they did this thing in Glendale, so the cost of a full-page ad, which normally during the rest of the year for normal groups might run, you know, twelve hundred dollars, suddenly jumps up to twenty-seven hundred dollars. Well, they passed this campaign finance reform, so we're just going to roll our prices back. That isn't going to happen, and it will increase from year to year. So, I think there should be some kind of indexing of these numbers. Someone on the street, and I just, I had to make a note of this because I just thought it was so clever, they said, "We should handicap the incumbents like racehorses and make them carry extra weight." I'm not sure we can do that, but I'm interested in the idea. Let's see. Off-year office holder account, Mr. Milano, I think, raised it. Is that something we can do, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, it's something you can certainly look at, and how you want to handle it, there's some examples that are already out there. Sometimes there's an off-year ban for a period of time from the campaign, or there's a reduced amount, or you can require, well, essentially, you have the hundred and eighty days to retire your debt, and if you don't retire that debt, then the money can go to a charity, back to campaign contributors on a pro rata basis, or to the government.
Well, let me say that I would support that notion as well, the idea of off-year office holder accounts, limit on, a, do anyway with that. And, let me see if I wrote all my notes. Want to talk about whether we place this on a ballot, or how much of this we place on the ballot, how much we don't. I think there are some issues we could place on the ballot, but simply the fact that we have council members who are running for reelection, incumbents, let's say, let's forget council members, because there are other people who'll be running, I don't know what kind of fundraising they may or may not have had. And frankly, I don't know what kind of fundraising other non-incumbents who have run before that have kept a campaign account open may have had fundraisers. I have no idea. But I don't think that that then says to us, "No, we put it all on the ballot." I think what it does is it, is it, we get started, and those rates, those new limits fall into place, they are high enough, they are high enough that a non-incumbent can still get into this race. I know it because I've done it, okay? I did it twice, actually. Did it this time, and I, sorry, Mr. Weaver, I came very close the last time. So, it can be done. Look, if there were no limits at all, if we weren't planning this, the incumbents would still be having their fundraisers, and any incumbent would, any non-incumbent would still be facing those huge war chests. They'd still be there. All that happens now is that it'll, from here out, will start to level the playing field. When I got, when I got into the race last time, and in two thousand and five, the incumbents already had raised lots of money. So, you know, I think we need to start. Now, there may be some issues that do need to go on the ballot, and I'm perfectly willing to hear that too. I'm interested in hearing my colleagues' input, but most of this, I think we can do. There is the issue of a limit to take effect of the next election dealing with use of campaign funds. Oh, monitoring TV and TV, free TV exposure, I'd be willing to look at that too. I don't have the kind of concern about it that I think some of my colleagues may, or some of the public might. You know, I think what we're really talking about, if we really want to say the words, is Armenian-language television. And you know what? I've run two, I've run two campaigns now where I had limited or no access to Armenian-language television. I don't look at that as fair or unfair, it's just, it's just one of the dynamics here in our city. I know it's technically probably not fair, but I just wasn't interested in engaging in that kind of thinking. I went out and did my own thing. You know, I have access to other kinds of advertising and promotion that perhaps some other candidate doesn't have. I'd be willing to look at it. I don't really know how we'd do that, but I'd be willing to look at it if there's a possibility or a suggestion as to how. I'm certainly willing to look at that too. With regard to the fore and after, you know, with the reporting and the, I would look at three months. I think that is sufficient, at least as a place to start. Trying to see if there's anything else that was mentioned that I missed.
I'm sorry.
Well, the issue of...
Campaign contributions from applicants.
Campaign contributions from applicants.
A ban.
Yeah, three months prior and three months after, basically six months. And I, I think that is, did I miss any of the headings or things you all talked about?
Candidates' own funds.
Well, I mentioned loans.
Candidate giving themselves funds.
That's...
Do you want to limit or no?
Cannot.
Thousand?
Can't limit a campaign, you can't limit a candidate's expenditure of their own funds. You can limit loans...
Loans by a candidate to the campaign.
Right. Because loans get repaid, but you cannot limit a candidate's expenditure...
Would that fall under...
Funds are regulated loans to campaign.
Loans from candidates themselves?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and that was...
I feel ten thousand dollars is adequate.
How about, how about loans from others?
I don't know. What is the, the regulations on that, Mr. City Attorney?
Again, it's as long as it's not so unreasonably artificially low that someone can't raise, mount a campaign. A number of cities have limits on loans by commercial institutions. Most of them don't put limits on loans from a commercial institution that's available on the same terms and conditions as it would be to any other member of the public. If you want to mortgage your house, for example, you can mortgage your house, and there's no limit. Most agencies that I've seen, though, when you talk about loans from others, is generally in the five thousand dollar range.
Okay. Well, whether it's five thousand or ten thousand, I somehow don't see that, that we should accept an amount that is larger that way than it is for someone, a candidate loaning himself funds.
And those are the issues, those two issues, I have a problem with setting the limit so high, because what it does, it gives an advantage to a person who is wealthy. And I've seen this, not this campaign, last campaign, I think the campaign before that, there was a person who seasonally ran several times, was a doctor, or, we all know who it was.
Excuse me, did you just hijack my, my time, by the way?
No, but he used to give himself a loan of thirty-seven thousand dollars every time, and then take it back. So, I think the loan needs to be a reasonable amount. I mean, five thousand, if you want, if you want to have yours, five thousand, if it's somebody else's, five thousand, then I'll feel comfortable. That would give you five thousand, that makes it ten thousand.
Personally, I think it should be a small, a reasonably low amount, and I think it should be the same for, for an individual loaning himself money, a loan that must be repaid, and some outside entity loaning them money. So, whether it's five thousand or ten thousand, I don't have a, I just think that ten thousand is a reasonable amount of money, a reasonable number in this day and age. That is something that most people could, could arrange a loan of that amount.
About loan from commercial lender on some terms to public, it says no limit now.
Again, again, I would say the same terms.
So, it's allowed to put a limit?
In other words, loans, as far as I'm concerned, would be across the board the same limit.
Volunteer time?
Problem with volunteer time under Randall versus Sorrell's court, the court almost, they don't come out and say it, but this strong dicta and suggestion on volunteer time is, you really can't regulate it. If it's true volunteer time where people aren't getting compensated, they're operating a phone bank, or they're walking, which you really can't, the court notes that you shouldn't put that into the calculus of an in-kind contribution, or in any way try to use that as a basis, because that'll, that drags down the quote-unquote contribution limit to a point that might be unreasonably low.
I want to regain...
Strong suggestion in that.
I want to regain the floor here for a moment, because I'd like to wrap up. I have two other things I want to mention. One is, I'm, I don't, please don't misunderstand from the fact that I'm just walking through this and saying what I think, is that I'm trying to be high-handed, or say, you know, imply, you know, colleagues or anybody else, just by God, listen to me. I'm just saying that, I've been thinking about this a lot for well over a year, and I know it's a difficult issue, as Councilmember Najari was saying, it's hard in a certain sense, when you're the candidate running, to step up here and say, "I think I'm entitled to this, that, and the other." Since I'm not running, I'm one of two who are not up for reelection, I just wanted to jump in and get some definites out there on the table so that we can begin to really debate some actual numbers. The other thing I wanted to say is, and I'll go on the record, is I'll be the one to do this, to walk out on this, climb out on this limb. I think that one of the reasons, can we kind of hold the buzz down there, out there, down just a bit? It's just constant, sort of yakking out there. It's a little hard to focus up here with that going on. It is something that I say to homeowners groups, to public, at public meetings and so on when I'm asked to speak, and that is this. One other thing that I think we should do, and I know it's a budget year, and we have a low budget, we have issues with our budget, finding money for expenditures, and this is something that perhaps we could put on the ballot if we so desired, but at some point or other, if this city council, not just this group of council members, but any city council here continues to earn the kind of wages that are so low that the only people who can afford to actually do this are people who are retired with a lot of means, or people who can afford to, such as myself, and I mean, I don't mean afford, in that I have much money, but that I can, because I run my own business and the nature of my business, sort of walk away from it to come do this. It really definitely limits the pool of candidates who can run, and it also limits, to some degree, the kind of professional experience you may want from a candidate who is running for office, because a lot of those people simply can't afford to take the kind of loss in wages to come do what is now essentially a full-time job. It didn't used to be, even in, for example, I think in even Mr. Weaver's term in office, it could have been done as a part-time job in the past. It simply can't now. In fact, we've been in session thirteen hours, more or less, in one meeting or another, and it goes on and on and on. I mean, if you are diligent about this, it, anyway, I think at some point, I don't think it's unreal, I know a lot of councils have been sort of frightened of going near this, it's like this electrified fence that if you touch it, you'll explode as a candidate running or incumbent. But I have to say, the feedback I get from the public is that this makes perfect sense. They understand the amount of time. We don't always agree on every issue, but this is a heck of a lot of work. And one last thing about that. I don't know what the, what the bottom wage is, or the lowest wage is of the other management people in our own department, but I'm guessing we are the, by far, the lowest-paid people in the management area. And, you know, so we come down here on Tuesdays, and we put on our necktie and a suit, we come down and do our job, and we're expected to negotiate wages for people who are, and understand concepts, or people who are making, what, three, four, times, five times, six times, ten times, or more, what we are, what we are earning. In the long run, and I'll, and I'll end it here, is, the public should also think about the caliber of the candidates we get and the experience they've... about, um, the caliber of the candidates we get, and the experience they bring, is also attached to what we pay, um, our, our council members. Uh, for the record, those of you who don't know, it's what, thirty-
Six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And it's more or less seven days a week. And, uh, so, anyway, enough.
But where are we?
Well, I asked the city attorney if he would sort of keep score, I've been kind of keeping score, uh, with comments made. Mr. City Attorney, what I heard from Mr. Eusefian was, a thousand-dollar limit, and, um, and perhaps put the rest on the ballot. And remember, when he spoke, he spoke first, and that was quite a while ago.
Can I, can I refresh?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that-
That's the note that I have as far-
After, after your speech, so, here's where I am. I'm, I'll go down this, this list, since you've provided the matrix. Individual, thousand. Lobbyist, thousand. Political Action Committee, thousand. Labor unions, thousand. Corporation, thousand. Glendale City Employee Association, thousand. Candidate-owned funds, no limit, unfortunately. Uh, loan from others, five thousand. Loans from commercial lenders, five thousand. Loans from candidate to self, five thousand. Volunteer time, no limit. City contractor, one thousand. Application, uh, I mean, applicants for permits, et cetera, or anybody who has in front of us business, no more than a thousand, but that has to be three months before and three months after ban on that money.
True.
Did I encapsulate your thing?
That's ex-
Pretty much?
That is, that is it, Mr. Quintero.
I will, I, I think, I think that is something I'm ready to vote on tonight. I think this is simple, the only one thing is, on that three month before, three month after is easy, because you already know, it's in front of you.
Well, we're directing.
How do you deal with the three months before?
You know, in, in a lot of these things, the devil's always in the details. Again, the good news is, we're not working from a clean slate. There are examples out there of other agencies that do this. It's generally when you have knowledge. Uh, in, in fact, under the government code, as it relates to housing authorities, it's when you first have knowledge, and that could be when the application is filed, or it can be at an earlier stage, depending upon the information that you have. So, it, it's going to have to depend on our processes. More than likely, I'll be looking at language that relates either to the application, or some other benchmark, when a, an official running for office knows or has reason to know that an application has been filed. Then it becomes a factual issue, if, and, and what I would do is, I would actually provide language that not only makes a three-month ban on accepting it, but a three-month ban on, on providing it. So that, and that way, you can, it would be somewhat consistent with state law, because the state law prohibition, for example, of anything more than two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a member of a housing authority-
Right.
It, it works both, again, I hate to use this phrase, but it's, it's, it applies to the individual member of the housing authority, as well as the individual making the contribution. And so, either-or can be the subject of penalties.
And this would obviously, um, require also some assistance, I would think, from our staff. I mean, I, I mean, yes, just as, as you helped us with our 460s, because, you know, what, what we're talking about, folks, is also the fact that sometimes someone can make a, well, I'll use myself as an example. Uh, I was not an incumbent. I received, uh, campaign contributions, let's say I received five hundred dollars from someone who owns a company. I wouldn't necessarily know, going into that race, or even once I was elected, that that, that company belonged to an individual that had business before the council. I was having to rely on the city attorney and his staff to help me, guide me on that. Um, afterward, I learned, and I started, you know, Googling all these names, saying, okay, who, who exactly are these people, and, and, you know, how are they connected, perhaps, to, to people who are, who are seeking, uh, have, uh, business before the council? So, Mr. Quintero-
Well, if something comes up, you give the money back.
Right.
You know, it's not hard to figure out.
And what, and what we're doing actually right now, relative to the housing authority, is staff is working on a, a flyer, or a, just a document, that if someone comes in to fill out an application, right there on that application will be the prohibition, so the individual knows, as soon as they're coming in to take out an application, that they're not supposed to be donating money in excess of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, if they're, they have a project which is within the jurisdiction of the housing authority. And we can apply that same kind of proactive approach, there's still going to be some monitoring, this can be necessary anyway.
On this, on this particular issue, let's not allow the discussion of that, the minutia of that to derail, though, for all focus of what we're doing. Um, the answer to you, Mr. Eusefian, for me is, yes, that's, that's what I'm saying. Um, but I do think that we also have to talk about, there's some things Mr. Quintero mentioned, uh, the monitoring of TV exposure, I don't know what that method or, or process would be, but we're not voting on this tonight, we're voting, we're, we're simply giving direction to staff, so if the staff can come back with, uh, some process, perhaps it, it can be included.
Drayman, yes. Uh, the issue with the monitoring of TV, um, we had candidates, three years ago, that owned a TV station, like now, they own a TV station, actually, before they had TV programs, they owned the TV program. And, um, they held their program, it was a regular program, it would come on, there would be a sign on the back that says, "Vote for so-and-so," his own campaign was on the back, and he would do his TV. Is that considered to be, uh, something that he should be doing, or he should not be doing? Now, the thing is, my understanding is, FPPC has very strict regulations on how you can do that, but we're not the enforcers of the FPPC, and so, he was not following some of those rules and regulations. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, is every TV program I have been on, I have to pay. There was no freebies for me, and I paid thousands of dollars for that. Uh, but there are individuals who have their own TV program, and I don't know how to, my understanding is, they're not allowed to do this, but they do it.
Mr. Quintero.
Then let's adopt the FPPC regulation.
Observe that, check on the FPPC regulation, I'm not familiar with that, I am familiar with the FCC equal time regulations-
Or FCC equal time.
Which, that, under federal law, applies to the cable operator. It doesn't really flow to us, it flows to the cable operator, to allow for equal time if someone is getting, uh, T- television exposure, or media exposure through that medium, in violation, or I shouldn't say in violation, but in, contrary to that rule of equal time, then the, then the complaint gets filed with the FCC against the cable operator, for example, for the cable operator to allow equal time. In, on page three, I think, of my report, I did note that, uh, when it comes to television or media or other exposure, you can treat it as an in-kind contribution, if somebody, for example, is given a discount, to be able to, uh, get their message across from the television, and they, or they know somebody who owns a television station, and they said, "Hey, you're a friend of mine, I'll let you appear on, on the show, and do a, a five-minute spot for your campaign," and they're allowed to do that for free, the, there are methods to, and it's just like any other in-kind contribution, it's as good as the reporting that the person is willing to give you. Technically, under four, currently under law right now, you're supposed to, uh, report the value of in-kind contributions, whether that's the free rental of a, a banquet facility or somewhere else, where they provide you with free food and beverage, that's in-kind contribution, that is supposed to be reported. If you're given free, uh, advertising materials or printing, those are also in-kind contributions. The same can be said of television exposure, if the production studio gives you free or discounted time.
Okay. We, we, that answer the question?
Well, we could also, uh, require, uh, some sort of reporting by the candidate, as to the time, the date, et cetera.
And actually-
There's some log, there's at least some log of what the candidate is saying that-
I think, I think you're right, and I think there can, we can anticipate there will be some issues. For example, putting aside programs where people specifically go to campaign as candidates, suppose Larry Zarian Forum was interviewing Councilmember, uh, Eusefian, and he announces his candidacy, and he's talking about what he will do if he's elected, and what he won't do, and so on and so forth. That can't work. Is that, is that, is he campaigning, is that a-
No.
You know what I'm saying?
I want to add, I have to pay for it, but that's an interview. No different than, uh, no different than Barack Obama, or Hillary Clinton ends up on Larry King Live. They don't consider that, uh, to be, uh-
Right.
That's a new story.
So, I can't, I can't compel Larry to let me on his show.
And, and again, depending on how, I think, Mr. Mayor, you used the term, how, how balled up we want to get with, with some of these details, those things can bog down the, what I'm hearing, at least is some consensus, to getting something, at least on the interim basis, before you to act now. Uh, if we treat it as an in-kind, and perhaps throw in some additional reporting requirements, consistent with Councilmember Quintero's suggestion, that's something that some agencies already do, it, it's something that goes above and beyond the reporting requirements that already exist under the, the 460 reporting requirements. So, that's something we can do fairly quickly. If we start getting bogged down in too many details of what is or what isn't, it, uh, it's just going to extend the time that it's going to take to try to draft something up that's going to, going to satisfy the majority of them.
Beyond the TV monitoring, is there anything else that, that we want to add to that, uh, that, that list? Remember, we're not voting on this tonight, we're giving some direction, it will come back, and we will have opportunities to add things we didn't think of, or-
Will there be a draft ordinance that will come back?
My plan is, unless I hear differently, is to put together an ordinance-
That'll be competitive.
-as soon as I possibly can, within, I'm, or probably, I'm hopefully only talking weeks.
And Mr. Uh, Mr. Howard, um, uh, I would like to request that this is the fast, that the, that we fast-track this as fast as our fastest fast-track will track us, because, uh, um, we do have some time issues, and there are candidates that may want to get in, or are planning to get in, that need to know what to do.
I would, I, I will tell you that I, I will be happy to do it as fast-track, as quickly as possible, I was going to say as fastly as possible, try to make it together, but that's human labor, just can't do it. As fast as possible, noting that the more we put in, the longer it will take, if it is just a simple, hard-money contribution limit of a thousand dollars across the board, fairly easy and straightforward, the, the more details we get into, the more, the, the longer it's going to take to try to balance all the rights, remember, as, as Councilmember Quintero once again said, and we, we, you balance into the First Amendment, and you, you need to make sure, and we've got the cases pretty well down, so we know where the limits are, but the devil's in the detail in the drafting on some of these, with the exception of some fairly straightforward language about hard-money contributions and in-kind contributions, the, the three months before and after ban, uh, I don't see that as being a problem. The office, off-year office holder accounts, to eliminate those, that's going to take a little bit more language, and some more, some more drafting, so-
I have some issues with that.
Again, depends on, in, how narrow or how broad you-
This doesn't require a unanimous vote from us.
Well, I, I don't even understand it, so that needs to be clarified.
It will, we will, we will proceed with discussion on this. Uh, let me just make the, the, uh, a, a, if I may, a comment, that I know we've been adding to all of these kinds of sort of difficult discussions, and we've been finding our way through in the last, over a year, uh, is, this isn't going to solve every problem, and isn't going to answer every issue, but it's a start, and it's, and we're going to see how it's going to go, and, um, we're going to bring input back, and you're going to talk to us as individuals, and email us, and other people watching will, and, and, uh, hopefully we'll craft it. Actually, please email Councilmember Najarian, with all of your, especially with all your complaints. Um, is there any other input before? Mr. Quintero.
I'm not quite clear, so are we headed to putting this on the ballot, or we're going to, uh, vote on this ourselves?
I can only speak for myself. I don't know what we will all do, but as a, as a group, but my, my preference at the moment is to have this come back as a draft ordinance, and to vote on it.
I guess then we could take components of it out, and put onto the ballot if we wish to.
Take what limits out?
Components out.
Oh, components.
Be the ones we're comfortable with in the form of an ordinance, take any others out.
We could do that.
Like if you're going to throw in-
Mr.-
Uh, salary or anything, and throw it all into the ballot.
And, and, and I, I don't want to add a wrinkle, but lest we not, um, lest I not mention it, and then it, it comes up at a later, at a later time, you have school board candidates and college board candidates, generally speaking, from our research, an ordinance that is not voted on by both, not only the, the people here in Glendale, but within the, the jurisdiction of the school board boundaries, it will probably not apply the candidates for college board or school board. Absent of a vote of those within the jurisdictional boundaries of the college-
And if we place it on the ballot?
Correct.
Yeah.
If you do not place it on the ballot, there's a strong argument that it, they will not apply to candidates for school board or college board, unless they voluntarily agree to be bound by it.
Right. Well, isn't there that whole bit about joining us in our election?
That's, and that's why I said, unless they voluntarily, I mean, we can, we can try to exercise some, uh, authority indirectly through that.
Mr. Eusefian.
I, I would like to have an ordinance, we vote on it as an interim ordinance, and have the same stuff put on the ballot, because when it's on the ballot, then the future council members cannot modify the ordinance, and the people vote on it. It becomes very simple, it's very clear, we could go there, and we will say, "Listen, what we're asking you to vote for is what we have been operating under for the last six months, eight months." We can do that when we see the draft ordinance. We'll make that decision.
Yeah, that's a, that's a possibility.
But if there's a salary ordinance, that has to be separate.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we should not include them together, because you don't want to kill one with the other.
It's a separate subject, anyway.
It has to be.
Is that a wrap?
But I'll take a chance on being exploded by that one, too.
Being exploded by, okay, anybody else before we move on. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you, I think we have good direction, and I appreciate the, the depth of the debate, and, uh, we'll bring you back something as quickly as possible to, to deal with these issues.
Okay.
Um, there's, uh, some of the ordinances that I've reviewed prior to preparing these reports are two or three pages long, others go into the hundreds of pages. I will stay away from the hundreds of pages-
Thank you.
And try to keep it, uh-
Thank you.
As, uh, keep it simple, and direct.
Don't go to hundreds.
All right, um, thank you, Mr. Howard, thank you colleagues, thank you for coming on that topic. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, could we move on to the next item, please?
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited, time is not a part of this agenda, each speaker is allowed five minutes, council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision.
These are all-
City Manager, Mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kusakian. Uh, we have Barry Allen, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Allen's coming up. For those people at home and here that have not, have been watching us since six o'clock rather than the Laker game, Lakers won by two points.
Oh, hi.
I'm sorry, Barry.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and of course, staff, I'm Barry Allen, and, um, I, I do have some thank yous.
Mr. Allen, let, let's restart your time. Folks, can, can we settle out there and, and try to hold down the conversation going on, this is more or less a running murmur, and you'd be surprised how hard it is, at least for the mayor who has a hearing def- excuse me, no, 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 ma'am, no, no, ma'am. Uh, your mayor has a, has a hearing deficit, anyway, and with the, uh, murmuring that's continuing out there, it is hard to conduct our business. Let's restart Mr. Allen's time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public, I'm Barry Allen. Um, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Eusefian, and Councilmember Quintero, in his absence, I know someone will tell him, and, uh, Councilmember Najarian, and Mayor Drayman, for, uh, last week's, uh, discussion on the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated. Uh, Mr. Najarian, for recognizing the fact that this has taken a long time, it's taken almost four years to get it to this point, and for Mr. Drayman, Mayor Drayman, for fast-tracking this particular issue. Um, I do want to raise something that I touched on at an earlier hour, and that is the, um, form that is, covers the section of the Political Reform Act of eighty-two, zero, one, five. And that's a report of charitable contributions made at the behest of an elected official. So, for instance, um, last year, last September, uh, Eagle Group, who I guess owns the marketplace, wrote a check for five thousand dollars to Dreaming of Roses at Mr. Weaver's post office box, and the Americana at Brand wrote a check for ten thousand dollars on September thirtieth of oh-seven, and before the end of the last one, Charter Communications, uh, wrote a check, uh, for ten thousand dollars on November the fourth. Now, the one that really concerns me is the GWP, who wrote a check for five thousand dollars for the purpose of, they thought, the Rose float. purpose of, they thought, the Rose Float. Now, we have the city having budgeted $90,000 out of the Parks and Recreation Budget, now we have another department of the city who is constantly asking for rate increases, who wrote a check for another $5,000 for the same purpose. Now, I think there's a problem there. And I think that with Mr. Weaver having his own, his own nonprofit organization, he is certainly looking like the perception of corruption. And I think that's what a lot of the people are seeing, I know I'm seeing that. A number of people from the Glendale Rose Float Association have contacted me with their chagrin at how they felt that he has co-opted their committee by using the same name. The Dreaming of Roses Committee of the Glendale Rose Float Association has now been co-opted by a city elected official who is Dreaming of Roses Incorporated. Now, I understand this will be on the agenda next week and by that time I will be able to provide as well additional content on the official complaint that is being filed with the Internal Revenue Service under their Form 13909. And that will be out and once it is filed, I will then be prepared to as well give that to the city attorney, Mr. Howard. Thank you, I'm Barry Allen, but I want to remind folks, if you want to get the Vanguard and you can read about the fantasies over, 818-243-1502. No sign, 818-243-1502. Barry Allen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Margaret Hammond followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council and staff, you look tired. I'm sure you're all tired, huh? You really ought to ask for a big raise, you know, maybe get overtime. First off, regarding Proposition 98, I believe it should be, you should vote yes and no on 99. The reason I'm here really, though, is about receiving a notice of the increase in trash pickup. I'm really, really disgusted with it. I think there was just an increase last year, was there not? Seemed to me I remember it going up for my trash bin. And as you know, I have complained about this before regarding the fact that I pay for a trash bin as a landlord at my apartments and yet my tenants at my apartments have to pay again. It's like they're being charged for no services rendered. It's wrong, I don't care what you say. I asked what would happen if I quit paying on the bin and took it out. They said, well, then the people would have to have separate trash cans, which would mean there would probably be 12 trash cans on my property instead of the bin that I pay for. I think it's wrong and if there's an increase to those tenants, I think that's wrong because, number one, there's been an increase in the water rates, an increase in the electric power, and now you're doing it trash. Now, that's not just for me. I'm talking about other people in Glendale, what I know of, seniors, who do live on their social security. They manage to hold on to their homes because under Prop 13, they manage to hold on to it. But the fact that all this, these increases eat into their income all the time, they don't get increases in their social security. I'm fortunate, I'm not in that position, but I know many of them are and have had to limit a lot of the things that they would like to do because of these increases. There are increases in our real estate taxes, too, not large like some of the other people because we are, some of us, under the Prop 13. I think it's wrong and over and over, these increases keep coming up. And yet you talk about, well, the budget, we don't have to worry, it's going, there's $500 million there. Why then are the people of Glendale, the citizens continually being, having their costs increased? And it isn't just the actual increases, it's the taxes on those increases, too, that are increasing. It's just ridiculous, I mean, for this to keep on. I know that the city has to take care of things, but there are a lot of people that suffer because of this. And, you know, the roads really need a lot of work, that's true. And I don't know, but on the other hand, are we going to put in toll rates to pay to get the roads fixed the next thing around? Is that what we'll do? That if I want to come out of the end of my street, I'm going to have to pay some money to drive on Glendale Avenue? Of course, it's continually torn up. It's torn up again and that's a street that's used more than any other street in Glendale. It's been proved by the engineering that Glendale Avenue is the most busiest street in Glendale. It always has been. And as I say, it's torn up again. And I think there's a couple of other north-south streets that are also torn up, which makes it very difficult to get around Glendale. If only one were torn up at a time, then you could go over to another one to, as an alternative. But anyway, that's my, what I have to say this evening. The only other thing that I have to say is that the left-turn light at the corner of Brandon Broadway, when you're going north and you want to make a left turn to go over toward the Galleria, wasn't working. I sat through five lights waiting. I wasn't going to the gallery, I was going to my doctor who's on the corner of Orange and Broadway, and I'll tell you, I was late for my appointment. I sat through five lights and almost had a cabbie hit me head-on when I was trying to make my left turn, finally. So I don't know whether it's still out or not, but I hadn't gone that way because I didn't want to sit through five lights again. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Herbert Milano followed by Rita Unikian.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman.
Good evening.
My name is Herbert Milano, members of the city council and city staff. You know, in the past seven years that I have taken upon myself to learn about how government works, I came to the conclusion that most of the problems really faced by a city government actually are fixable. And I keep asking myself, why is it that many of these problems linger for so long? Whether the problems happen to be social problems or gang problems or issues having to do with housing, people being evicted, roads being maintained, sidewalks being maintained, curbs being maintained, and you have a particular fixed budget from which you have to draw, I think that the problems of a city are fixable if we elect individuals to city council whose goal and objectives are as problem solvers. You know, Mr. Yusefian, I found especially in the past year, an approach from you as a problem solver. I see it in you, Mr. Drayman. From time to time, I see on issues that have to do with public works and engineering, Mr. Weaver coming up with ideas and objectives that are clearly set to solve issues. And I think that the problems that this city faces, that are significant problems can be fixed and they can be solved, but not under the current structure that we have and not when we don't know why a person wants for office. To this day, I don't know why Mr. Najarian ran for office, this is my personal opinion, I have no idea. But I do know that whenever I see information concerning, you know, how things get built, who has the influence and where your time is spent, just looking at how your time is spent is already an indicator of what's important to you. You know, I like the idea that you proposed earlier concerning, Mr. Drayman, concerning having individuals run for office that could get paid to do the work of problem solving. I'll be in favor of something along the lines of a term limits, you know, maybe two terms or six years, $120,000 a year, something that would at least be of some compensation to individuals who can take a sabbatical from their profession and truly provide their families and provide a city with a service that is really worthwhile. I really believe that it's, I took the interest in it because for the past 20, 25 years, I've been consulting with companies, helping them to solve their problems. And oftentimes it has to do with what was the original strategy that they had, how did they measure outcomes, what were the goals that they established? And it's what I've been doing for so long that I felt maybe I can give some of my time to understand why things don't work. Why do we still have kids, you know, who don't graduate? You know, 70%, 65% of them, you know, in some areas that don't graduate? You know, the lack of support in the afternoons and evenings for kids, the lack of facilities for them to attend to, how a family of, a single-parent family gets to maintain a child, you know, in such a way that they will not go, you know, in the wrong direction. Those are fixable. But when I look at this city's budget and at the hundreds of millions of dollars that this city, that comes through, the city, and find out there is little interest in really solving the problems, I wonder, who are we electing and what was the reason for running? I wish I could sit down right now and say, oh, I'm going to list down the reasons why this person ran for office and these are the objectives and the problems they want to solve. And you know, I find myself that I can do that. Maybe I can write two or three lines, but I really don't see that. And I think that's part of the problem. You know, the objectives are outside of the interests of the city. That somebody's running for another office or thinking of running for another office or thinking of doing the IOUs to obtain some type of favor from someone to, you know, for their own career, but as a self-serving issue, it appears that that's the reason. But as an objective to solve the problems of the city, I just don't see that. I think the structure is wrong, there's something significant that has to change. Because oftentimes, what is being said during the campaign and what actually I see happening here are two different things, not for everyone. And it is, I think it is a shame that we have the capability, we have the wherewithal to significantly improve the situation in this city. You know, I can see it now in the city of Los Angeles and why that city is in such a terrible shape, but the symptoms are the same. You know, there is a reason for individuals who have a stake in the city to, you know, put their name on the ballot and say, I'm going to aim to solve the following problems. I wish that you would reiterate what those are and let us hear again, why is the reason why you're in office? I'd love to hear that again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Rita Unikian followed by Vatamish Takmazian. Hello.
Hi.
I may be translating. Extra time for the translation.
Right. Amen, Barak Shurziz.
How are, excuse me, how, let me just ask you, Ms. Unikian, what exactly are we planning to do? You have a lot of cards here, are they from these individuals?
Yes.
Okay. If they're going, are they planning to speak, do you know?
[unintelligible].
If they're planning to speak...
There's a few people here that would like to speak.
There's a number of people that have turned in cards and it's more than just a few. If they're going to speak, I'd like them to take a seat, come up as we call them, rather than everybody stand here in a ball right here. So... It's going to take some time to get through all of these cards.
[unintelligible]. No, but...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
They're only going to take one minute, two minutes, that's it. Okay. First of all, hi, my name is Rita Unikian, I have lived in Glendale since 1989. First of all, I am single parent and have volunteered at the Glendale Schools for 12 years. The reason of my concern is to ask the city councillor member to please consider looking into rent control, especially for all low-income residents in Glendale who are struggling to make a living. I have handout that I needed to distribute to Glendale residents to sign and support my cause. Thank you for your consideration. Just one minute. She's pleading with you as the mayor to take into consideration that they are low-income families and they're struggling to... The rents are increasing and they have medical bills to pay and they're struggling with that as well. She apologizes for the speaking, but it took very long and... Because they're elderly. They would like to know that they have a complaint and that's why they're here. Okay. Thanks you.
Thank you. Okay. The next speaker is Vatamish Takmazian and they're followed by Levon Abramy.
What was the name?
Vatamish Takmazian. Followed by Levon Abramy.
Okay, there's no Vatamish.
Okay. She... Can't speak.
All right. Let's move on to Levon Abramy.
Excuse me, Rita, if you're not going to be translating, can you please sit down? And also, can you tell him to state his name for the record, please?
[unintelligible].
Levon Abramy.
He is a resident of Glendale. He's on retirement. The rent is too expensive and he cannot afford it. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Abramy. Anjin Hartunian followed by Miran Thomas.
She says, good afternoon, her name is Anjin. She's also on social security and her rent's also been increasing, $75 every year. Her social security is not enough and everything, the cost of living has increased and she cannot afford her payments. She hopes that rent will be, there will be rent control instilled and that rent will increase every two to three years as opposed to every year. She's hopeful that you will consider having rent control and she thanks you and says that she enjoys living in this beautiful city.
Thank you. Miran Thomas followed by Artush Satapian.
He's been living in America for 21 years. In Glendale for years and... He's overwhelmed with the payments and the rent and his social security, the entire thing goes to his rent and he cannot, he's struggling to make payments for everything else and he hopes that he can continue living in this city and just like the other lady had mentioned, and he thanks you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Artush Satapian. Artush Satapian.
My name is Sahar Al Artush. Hazar over, espesi ch'kavur martik kanaisdak. B'ynel yesam. Glendale bur amnet esak orekni parsumek. Kalenli hamar orekek duru, xist orekek duru. Has, tan varza li hamar orekek duru.
There's 1,000 people like him in the city and you're voting or you're considering other things, but this is an important issue to them and it's not being considered yet.
Shad martik kavur Glendale iran k'astak. S'te'z sarkel. Panorik kavur shenkes sarkes t'arinkan. Ashada varza narutishda. Has, simon dug' an orek irans tipumen. Tan varza tipu arin kaist Glendalei terana. Ishka hamar, iras siyas k'akis dera. Ishka hamar yarana. Ishver ira hayrenikis, martir hayrenikis yarana. Ishver men mer Amerikan meri hayrenikis mer kaliforun, mer hayrenikis es terana. Ishka n'tesh varkalan mer samar. Has?
Sorry. A lot of laborers are from Glendale and they've been forced to leave the city due to the increasing rent. And why should they leave this beautiful city and go to other, have to live in other places?
An martik ch'zach, martik bechen uzum ch'kavur martik abre. T'ibewa, zanguben, ler hargele, Rita in aspimut shezup s'tehas kenam. Ro'shter Rita in doler espesi martikas n'sum s'gina. Ishki iran kenan, tonerank etan, ishki hamar. Mithe po' iras man ishka k'aktsra. Bur martik s'panu, iras duzenk tsom. Ke varst rang, unem po' bolo. Po' k' yerehaner, yey tasat yerehaner. E'tzanot er unem, bur chi uzum, yerehaner s'tehat ker uzum etan.
There's a lot of families in Glendale that are struggling and there's a lot of criminal activity, criminals who get to stay in Glendale and good people like them and families do not because of the increasing rents.
Khanever iran kasig Glendaleum tsanvelen, mek ta tseren. Unem love shurjapat, unem love khaak, unem love city, unem love tasatu, unem love ingernet. Iman ay perre, et yerehanet ar k'timn'at, s'asat tasagar martikas mesh. Et yerehan love sovaru, yes, ishks t'zanot er, git t'zanot er unem. Ish'ing barakamner ismeke. Iras samali aprar thogat shabusti, bas ti hazar u'tar hitzun dollar barza talim. Bas t'iray yerehaner. Ishki hamar. Ishki ed orekek duru, mit harza. Karagandik.
These families have raised their children in Glendale and now their children are being forced to go to other schools in other cities. Why are you not taking action on this?
Has, et ch'kunetsa, martik en traz yerehaner o'tezin draylen, n'starek ista. Astak. Eke anek gorz iran samar. Eke anek bur noris tukasik city khasel. Noris chitim manelak. Eke anek tratzentel thogavakalnu, trankel city zelalnu. Yev, enturum t'ezi, astak ashkatumek. Bas gor ch'ekan, ch'ek ashkatum, et harzay hamar.
These are citizens that have voted for you and support you and he feels that you should be helping them as well in this cause.
Es po' bolo es alxantrumek, po' bolo es t'ezar isxantrumek. Es harz ishurz, ashkatek. Yet tarakam patasant vek mezze, astak patasak. Yet et tatak patasant vek, unem ch'ek ashkatum. Shnora kalen.
He thanks you and says he hopes for your support and he would like a clear answer from you.
Thank you. Okay. Mikael Mikaelian, followed by Anik Zagarian.
Hi, my name is Michael Mikaelian. I'm a resident of the United States and I live on Glendale about 18 years old, 18 years. And I want to know, guys, to put, first of all, for the Section 8, because Section 8 is not working now. But 1980, 1990, 98 until now, they don't have enough opening now, Section 8. And after that one, I want to make for the home one. I don't want to, I don't want to raise it up no more, please. That's it. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Anik Zagarian, followed by what looks like Abed Sotarakanian.
Ba'ir uk. Yes, ekel em es harbar chenk nem apru, inkamneri. An'tad ammentari avela zmen ren.
Z'yanun xantran k'as.
Apru'm es harbar di shenke, inkamneri. Mes ammentari avela zmen ren, t'ez ishchem k'anim pananem. Xantrum em nu'n ch'apov mana, gonay eset shenke chatkavay. Mana matek. En z'asmen yeter ch'ez karu'tar barzat taskena. Bas absosmo v'ret shanki shenke shadlav shenke, shenka. Bolo jaroburtay ts'goen. Bur ch'mi barpan chenk deset rans. Xantrum em yes, menam v'te'apren.
She lives on a street on Harvard and she's very happy there, but they told her that if she can't afford the rent, that she has to leave and she pleads that you can do something to help her so that she doesn't have to leave the building and that the rents don't increase every year.
Samkano men bu'sh mana. Yes, menak ssai emshtan, murich panchun.
And she hopes that she can stay at the building and she only receives ssai and it's not enough to pay her rent and her cost of living.
Aragana pavarat, m'urich.
She wants to have enough so that she can stay at that building.
Shnora kalten.
She thanks you.
Thank you. Could you, sir, could you help me pronounce her last name for me?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm city councilor of Glendale. This is Abed Garakanian.
Thank you.
This is Abed Garakanian. I'm living 19 years in Glendale area. And I am a senior citizen and 76 years old and I receive ssai. And will you please, if it's possible, you help try to rent control justice? Because I wait for Section 8, but Section 8 Glendale is a stop right now. And thank you very much of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Violet Durvanessian. Violet Durvanessian? Okay, she may have left. Okay. That is the last speaker card. Let me take some responses from my colleagues. Comments, if there are any. Mr. Weaver?
I want to go home.
Mr. Quintero? Do you have any? Mr. Najarian?
No.
Mr. Yusefian?
The audible signal on Harvard and Brand?
Yes.
When you get to the middle of the street, you can no longer hear it. And I have good hearing.
We turned them all up. Mr. Mayor Councilmember Yusefian?
That was yesterday. I checked it yesterday.
We'll go out and check it again.
So, I don't know. And on one side is a certain type. When you get to the other side, it's a different... I guess it's trying to tell you, you're getting to low.
East, west, north, south.
Okay, that's what.
You have a chirp and a tweet.
Yeah.
Cuckoo and a chirp and...
Whatever. I just thought you might know.
Let's check it out.
My only comment is that comments are these, and I will make it brief so we can move on. It's been a very long day. I just want to thank the council. We've been sitting together since early this morning. It's been a very, very long day. You've tackled a lot of heavy issues. I thank you for doing that. I thank you for putting in the time and for staying with the process till 10:30 at night. Thank you so much.
Will you turn second?
Motion to second, we adjourn.